Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the June 16th meeting of the Litchfield School Board. You're joining us kind of already in session. We called the meeting to order at 5:00 PM and started with a non-public session. So we're just returning from that and we're at the point of our agenda where we see if we have any reviews or we review and revise the agenda. Does anybody have any revisions?
There are a couple of links that will live and up and noted in red if we added stuff in. So but it will all be part of the discussion tonight and nothing that we need to vote on.
With that, I'll read the summary of non-public actions from June 1st, 2022. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to approve the non-public minutes from May 18th, 2022. Mrs. Ames seconded. The motion carried 5-0-0. Mr. Cutter made a motion to accept the nomination of Sophia Fowler as Director of Special Services at a salary of $100,000 for the 22-23 year. Mrs. Harrison seconded. The motion carried 5-0-0. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to authorize the superintendent and business administrator to enter into negotiations with Bonnet Page and Stone Corp. to serve as the construction manager for the new elementary school project. Mrs. Hershberger seconded. The motion carried 5-0-0. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to authorize the superintendent and business administrator to negotiate the contract with Barker Architects for architectural services for the new elementary school project. Mrs. Ames seconded. The motion carried 5-0-0. And a summary of return to public session actions from June 1st, 2022. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to expend up to $400,000 from the capital improvement expendable trust fund for architectural fees for schematic designs for the new elementary school project. Mrs. Ames seconded and the motion carried 5-0-0. We don't have any presentations or recognitions tonight. This has been two weeks full of presentations and recognitions for all of our amazing students. And so we'll move on with community input. Do you have anything? Did you want to come up?
I do. I was actually hoping the presentation would be.
Oh. A presentation on the curriculum?
The Spanish, yeah.
Okay. There's another community input at the end if you'd like to hang around. All right, thank you. Okay, is there anybody on the Google Meet?
Let me double check. I was in it and now I'm out of it. Let me go back in here.
And for reference, if from anybody watching at home, you can join the Google Meet at meet.google.com/HAR-JANA-HNK.
And there is nobody in the meet.
Okay.
Other than me.
All right, with that, I'll close community input for this session. There will be another session at the end of our meeting. Correspondence.
Oh, just in time. We've received quite a bit of correspondence in regards to the Spanish and the eighth grade program. And I will name off the list of parents who wrote in and hit some of their points. June 2nd, Kathleen Dusset. June 3rd and 6th, Melissa Reiki. June 7th, Tracy Geiger. June 7th, Shaylin LeVake. June 7th, Courtney Landry. June 8th, Janelle Novello. June 9th, Anissa Swanson. June 13th, Angela LaPlante. June 13th, Melissa Reiki. June 16th, Joanne Chadry. And June 16th, Denise McQ. And basically, there were all concerns about the eighth grade Spanish program and its unfair not to offer to all the eighth graders. There were concerns about how the students were chosen. And it seems that a lot of children with 504s weren't chosen. Also, not right that the seventh grade, all the seventh grade would be receiving Spanish and the eighth grade, not the whole eighth grade class would receive it. They'd be missing out on a credit. And there were questions about our policy on world languages. And I believe this will be discussed later in the meeting. Yes. So hopefully your answers, your questions will be answered. At that time, thank you.
Thank you. Was there any other correspondence?
Not that, why did I miss one?
No, I'm just asking.
I went through it twice.
It's okay. I believe you.
Do you want to disclose some of the texting that's going on?
What texting?
The board has been engaged in some texting. So I just think we've had a practice of just disclosing for that, you know, there was not a decision that was made, but just communication between board.
Let me find that. Andrew's nice note to the teachers. I might go up to the top. Summary of events. The one that Tina sent out with the questions?
I sent a text out that we, I had started a Google Doc for everybody to add to so that we could, to help facilitate the board communications tonight.
I have it. I'm setting, sorry. There's a lot. We've been in contact with the vendor. Please, I'm surprised with, oh, this is about chairs. I'm sorry, Tina, can you tell me what you?
That's the chairs at the graduation.
That we're missing? Oh, yeah.
And then there was a message about.
Oh, here it is. Happy Friday. I shared a document with you all to frame our upcoming work session discussion on communication. If you have not received, please let me know. Baby boom going on. Birth rate.
Yeah, I sent an article on the baby boom in New Hampshire. Highest growth, two-year growth rate in births, 7% in the whole country.
We had some discussion about whether we should bring chairs or not to the graduations and promotion ceremonies. And who's coming and going to different things? In a retirement, in town, our resignation. And that's, and some clarity on the LGBTQ issue that we had a public comment on.
Was it a public comment or was it?
There were emails, so there were those two emails.
But it wasn't to all of us.
The two were to all of us. One was to just a single board member.
Right.
All right, that Helen Grodin one. Did you have that up?
And that was regarding an incident that the parent was objecting to something that was done.
Was being taught in the classroom and she was sent to the right. And she followed the steps.
Right.
Spoke to the teacher, went to administration. And then she said she had a great meeting. It was very happy and wrote things on public media. That was really nice to see.
Good.
That everyone worked together and she followed all the steps.
I let everyone on the board know that I had requested more information about the Spanish programming at the middle school. So that was it.
I'll do that next time.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Superintendent comments?
Yep, so just a couple of things. I mean, obviously today was the last day of school. We had a smooth dismissal. Everybody was able to, to be picked up and brought home safely. It's been a flurry of activities, I mean, in board members. And I want to thank you for attending all the things that have gone on. From, you know, the high school graduation was really a terrific event, as it always is. The committee that organizes it does a phenomenal job of putting stuff together and keeping the tradition going. Parents have requested this be seated the way they were, which was kind of interesting. You know, it's like there are positive things that came out of the pandemic in terms of what it brought about and changes of activities such as graduation. So that was just great. You know, the sound system, so Dave Gingras had a good speech. I know that because I was on the stage and I could hear it. But the, the sound system just did not pick it up the same way. I've heard from people that they had a hard time hearing him. So I'm hoping if you watch graduation on the recording, you'll be able to hear him there.
Yeah.
Because it'll be picked up a little bit differently. But anyway, that was just a super activity for the high school.
Okay. Okay, the live stream is not working right now?
We just got a, oh, no, I guess it's good now. Sorry, we just contacted it.
Okay.
And at the middle school, they've had a couple of events. And, you know, Jen is sort of working her way through being the first time as principal with those events. So the eighth grade promotion ceremony last night was fabulous. The students looked great out on the field. The families appreciated it. Another, you know, additional thing was to bring your own chair. I don't know how we came up with that, but it, all of a sudden, it was like, women, everybody's got chairs sitting in the back of their cars. So let's just say bring your own chair. And it just makes that event so easy to set up and to take down. So anyway, so that went well. And weather cooperated with both of those events. Down at GMS, the field day was spectacular day. And also the, the fifth grade event, which is sort of spread out because now they're doing it by class, which I do, fourth grade, I'm sorry. My own child's in fifth going to the middle school. I forget where this, where we are, but yes, fourth grade. But again, the parents were able to come during the daytime events that were specific to the classes, right?
It was fun.
And I went to the general one that was done to recognize. And again, the chorus sang and sounded spectacular. So really, we had a good end of the year event.
I think we hit everything between the five of us.
Yeah.
Everything.
Awards nights and yeah, yeah, it's been a very busy two weeks.
I will say to the board that I will be engaging in conversation with the principals because I want us to examine end of year activities against our instructional standards and the hours that were required to meet. Because, you know, we've got to make sure that we don't lose balance between bringing proper academic closure to the year and at the same time, providing students with fun and enriching activities. And some of those activities come under the category of instructional, but not all do. And so again, I just want us to, I will be having that dialogue with our admin team just to really focus on how we get good closure to a school year overall. So if the board has thoughts for me on that, I'd love to hear them. I'm putting you on the spot, so I don't need to hear it tonight. But we will at least be looking at what the state minimum standards say relative to instructional time and then how the various events fit in throughout the course of a year. The other comment I wanted to share is on culture and climate. So we heard back from Bill Preble with a draft proposal. And what we're working into the Title IV grant is to engage with Bill and his group on a couple of different levels. So at the high school, we intend to engage with Bill for sort of the full, the full program, what he calls option one, which is the most intensive presence and, and study of the culture and climate at Campbell. And the cost of that is about $19,000, 19.5 maybe. And our feeling is that we want to make sure that we spend that time, that we engage with the students and the student leadership team. We provide, collect and provide the data back to the school. And so it is our intent to follow through with Bill and sign that agreement and to use grant funding for that. So it's not anything that will come out of the budget. Our sense at the middle school and the elementary school is to do what's called option three, which really consists of a survey tool with the data coming back to us and some general guidance on how to interpret and use the data that we get back. But it will involve surveying staff, students, parents, and collecting that data. And then having the principals lead with some guidance, the interpretation of the data and the goal setting relative to the data that they collect back. If the data comes back and reveals something that seems to indicate that we should get a more, a higher option or contact hours on the option, then we would work from that. But right now, our feeling is that, that the most intensive work needs to be done at Campbell. And that's what we intend to do. So the other two schools are 6,500 each, so for a total of 13,000. And again, that's all grant funded, right, Mary? I'm looking at Mary because Mary's got the money tree to shake on this one, so.
As a, that's the plan. We haven't gotten our Title IV allocations for next year, but.
Can you explain why such a difference is needed, you know, at the high school? Why more focus at the high school than the other two schools? How you arrived at that conclusion?
Yeah, what we're looking at is reports that we're getting from the high school. Anticidal evidence has been collected at the high school. That leads us to believe, you know, Mike Perez had already formed the student work, the student group, I can't remember the name of it, but it was to begin work on the culture and climate of Campbell. So there's already some momentum to examine this. And, you know, we're looking at several incidents that have occurred at the high school that lead us to believe that's where we need to put our time and attention. You know, the, the data's there that says we need to dig into this. The other thing is that as much as Mike leading a student group is helpful, I think having people from the Center for School Climate guiding them and, you know, instead of them developing survey tools, there are survey tools. They're the experts in interpreting that. They can then work with the team. The whole goal is a gradual release model where they come in, they train, and then they sort of back off as the group becomes more comfortable with wrestling with that data. And so, you know, it's intended to be a two-year commitment and it's intended to be fairly intense. But then, you know, it's also intended to be they back off and leave the school to carry that work forward. So those are the reasons why the high school is having the more intense culture and climate study. I also think we looked at the new principal coming in and providing him with the data so that as he's setting goals and setting priorities, it's based on data that's been collected here and now, not three years ago or something along those lines. So it was another opportunity with the change in leadership at the high school. Anything else on culture and climate?
All right, school board comments? If I, it's okay if I start. I just wanted to congratulate everybody on the end of the school year. I know it's been, you know, big steps towards getting back to normal, not without hiccups and road bumps. And, you know, we're still coming together as a district. So congratulations to our students on all of your various awards and achievements, specifically our seniors, our eighth graders and our fourth graders who are moving up to the, the next, who are leveling up. And thank you to all of the faculty and staff within the district who have been so instrumental in helping our kids be successful and all the time and effort and dedication you put in this year. I hope, I know that Mary's going to talk about ongoing learning for, for faculty this summer. And that's exciting, but I also hope people, you know, take some time to themselves and reflect and relax and come back rejuvenated and ready to go at it again in the fall.
Echoing off of that, I don't know that I've ever heard so many parents, teachers, staff all agree how exhausted they are, how long this year has been. And so maybe because of COVID and it's just been a continuing, we haven't had the breaks that we needed to. But I truly hope everyone's able to rest and recharge. But that as a board, we are still able to get some work done over the summer while it's a little bit quieter, you know, to the extent that we're able to. So again, congrats to everybody. You made it through the year.
All right, I have a few things. Spanish, I completely support offering Spanish to the eighth grade to all students. I also support expanding Spanish to earlier grades. However, to me, it does seem fundamentally illogical to offer it in full to all seventh graders, but not to all eighth graders. So I'm getting that out there. Congratulations to all the academic award recipients at all schools at all ages. There were multiple ceremonies. But I want to also say there are a lot of people that weren't recognized for their academic awards, okay? So I want to say congratulations to all the students who gave it their all and gave it their best. Because every student who finishes the year should be able to point to some successes. Even if you came up a bit short, at least you gave it, gave it everything you could. And there are positives that can come from that experience. And I hope everyone takes time to celebrate all those accomplishments and look for ways to build on that. Congrats to so many sports teams for their playoff runs, the meet of champions, to our performers, I know the Great East Festival, we've had multiple concerts. Fabulous. Something that just shocked and surprised me from the GMS weekly principals report was that GMS raised over $10,000 to the, for the American cancer side. I don't think I've ever seen that amount of money get raised in one event for anything. It's phenomenal. I feel like.
Yes, that was a shocker too.
That was a huge shocker.
Amazing. But yes, for charity like that.
Yes, yes. But also the Terry Fox Walk has raised over many years, almost $53,000. And those are things I think the school system can point to. We are giving back to the community in so many ways that really make a big impact. So, so congratulations, so many great things.
Well said.
Second, ditto.
I'm worried about those.
Why are you all looking at me? I mean, I have no specific comments. I mean, I'll, I'll share your sentiments with Spanish. I'll get that out too. I mean, I was going to save that comment until we have that discussion. Yeah, that's it, this.
Oh, I'm not the top now. I would like to thank the teachers for hanging in there, having walked the walk. It's hard to teach kids how to sit in seats again after some absences in long periods and structured. And I liked your level up video game comment. That was nice.
They get that.
Yeah. That it's been a hard year, a different year, but very challenging that you guys did it. And you need your rest. We all need to get back in a good space before we start next year. New beginnings. And I think we did a great year no matter what. And I really am proud of all of you, that all of us who made it to all of the things because it is a tough time of year. And I know as a parent, I appreciate when other people come to these events, even though you didn't have a high schooler or you didn't have a high schooler or you didn't, I didn't have a fourth grader. It's nice to get out and see happy people because sometimes we only hear the negative and not the positive. And I've seen a lot of happy faces and cool kids, especially yesterday with the sunglasses and everything. It was awesome. The kids looked great at graduation. It was just awesome. I love graduation. That's one of my favorite things. And there was all, and this sounds cheesy, but everyone gets the same amount of claps. Do you know what I mean? Like I've been to thing like, and then some kid gets us, at Campbell, everyone gets about the same. And you know what? To someone like me, that matters. There isn't a hoot hoot for certain people. It goes along with everybody counts that does the work, no matter how many awards, banquets, whatever.
Thank you. My computer went to sleep. Thank you. We'll move on to the public minutes from May 18th.
Make a motion to approve the public minutes from May 18th.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And a seen? The pass is 5-0-0. Brings us to the business administrator report.
I held off on financials just because of the kind of target as year-end payrolls and stuff get, get going. So I wanted to be as accurate as possible. And on the 29th, I'll be able to do that. So my hope is after the payroll is processed next Wednesday and Thursday and PO management is done, that I'll be able to provide draft end of year financials Friday ahead of the meeting. So you have a chance to look at it and also provide final listing of proposed incumbents and such. The architect's contract is noted on here. That is still kind of in a back and forth negotiation phase between Kyle and our consultants looking at it and everything. So we hope to have that available to move forward on the 29th as well. That's all I got unless anyone has any questions.
So there's no attachment here?
There's no attachment.
Okay, just check.
Any questions for Cory? All right, hearing none, move on to the curriculum report.
All right.
It's a doozy.
It is. Rather than do my report and give a presentation of some sort, what I opted to do because there is so much that I just want to report out on. I linked everything right into my report. So there's a lot of information in there and I'm going to try and hit as much of it as I can. Some of it does need approvals. I am going to specifically hold Spanish to last only so that we can get through all the approvals and those don't get lost in the, in the shop. So first, professional learning. I linked in the schedule for our upcoming Live to Learn. We have 60 staff members across the district that have signed up between the seven days, four days next week in June and three in August. This is one of my favorite events. And in years past, I usually come in cheering because we get 40, 42 people. We get 60 people signed up. And that's not including the admin team. Like we're all there for our own admin retreat at the same time. So it's really exciting. The other thing that I want to really highlight with that is the sessions are being done by staff. Every, well, with the exception of a sort of group-led session, everything is being led by teachers. And so that's really exciting to me. That's been my goal since I came in was to shift PD away from, you know, me having to lead the PD because we have so many experts in our own, in our own schools. So it's really exciting that, you know, I just reached out and these people said, I want to do this. I want to do this. And a lot of the topics, the topics were generated through a survey to staff. And the people that stepped up to run the sessions, they were able to kind of put their own spin on it. So it's been, it's very exciting.
Can I ask a question maybe on that? Was the teacher paraprofessional collaboration workshop open to paras as well? Oh, okay.
Yes, Live to Learn is open to staff across the building.
So it supports staff too?
Yeah, it supports staff is, I, every time I send out the communication about this, it goes two-step across the district. And, and we always have had paras that come and sign up for some of the sessions. So it's, it's important.
Seems like a very beneficial topic.
Yes.
What, what's not reflected there too? If I could just jump in for a second, the admin team is in administrative retreat at the same time. So even, you know, people could sign up for events that are on there, but we were also meeting as a team, looking at goals. So we're going to go back to the school board goals that were set for the, I think it was a five-year goal document. And, okay, so where's our focus area? And we'll break that down by school. So you'll get that document in July showing what goals we're proposing to follow. But that work will be done as part of the retreat time also. So I can share with the board, once the agenda is finalized, I'll share it with the board.
So moving on from that, a few things coming through for graded, from grading and reporting. The reassessment that's linked in there has come to the board already for feedback. But after that meeting, we brought it back to our final meeting to see if there was any finalized feedback from either the board or from the buildings. And there was not. So the grading and reporting committee is recommending this as our district-wide reassessment policy or procedure, sorry.
Question I have about it, and when I was on grading and reporting, I brought this up that, so this says the process is within five school days from the posting of the grade on the student portal, the student or parent must initiate a plan with the teacher to reassess. And my concern is that the portal does not date stamp when the grade is put in. And so you don't know when that five-day period begins or ends.
And we've taught, we talked a lot about that in the committee. It's the expectation we have, we do have an expectation that kids are checking their grades, that parents are checking grades, but we also have asked that teachers are going to communicate that out as well. This will be a public document. There is no way for us to set an alert. So I don't know how to combat that.
We get a, I get a Power School update when my son's grade drops to Power School, like so and so.
Only when it drops. That's not one assignment. I signed up for every single report.
I do too.
Yeah, when the grade goes up.
But you have a point that if I assign something on March 14th and I don't put the grade in until March 19th, does it start from the 14th?
No, it starts from the date. It starts from the date the grade is posted.
But we don't know what that is.
Right, that's the thing. We don't know when it's posted. We don't know when it's actually graded.
I'm assuming that you. They just don't want to drag it out. We don't want to drag it out weeks and weeks and weeks. Because sometimes that happens, but I get the five-day thing.
I feel like there should be a way to put that in there.
We've checked, we've checked with Andrea. We, you know, I'm hoping maybe there will be something added in the new updates, but as of right now, that's the problem, it isn't. So we have to, and, and the reality is we have to, it's a, it's a team thing. We have to rely on teachers to say, I put grades in for X, Y, or Z, and kids to say, I am going to make sure that I'm checking my grades regularly. And, and knowing that this is the language in the reassessment, I think that makes that communication piece even more important.
Maybe it shouldn't say five school days. Maybe it should say the teacher will give, give notice to. Maybe it's just, you know, because you can't hold anybody to the five days if you don't know exactly when it comes in. Like there's no way to hold anybody accountable either way.
Right, because if a student says seven days later, hey, I want to work on this. And the teacher says, well, no, this has been in there. Right. Cause if a student says seven days later, hey, I want to work on this and the teacher says, well, no, this has been in there for a week. How does the parent or student or? Well, again, I go back to that should be, there should be communication in the classroom. There shouldn't be major assignments that are being put in that aren't being handed back or aren't being referred to. That was the, you know, the, we had a large representation from the high school on the committee. And that was sort of the understanding is that we need to make, that, that there is a responsibility on both parties to be communicating on the work is updated, the work is in now, you know, check your power school. But also, you know, handing it back if it's, that's, that's the other piece to it.
You know, my concern that I raised during the committee meeting relating to this was what happens when a teacher puts a grade into power school, but does not hand back the assignment yet? Because student A is out with COVID for five days. And so the teacher is holding on to the tests. And the answer I got was when the student knows the grades in there, they need to contact the teacher to come up with a plan. But the exact corrections or retake or whatnot may not be determined until it's a matter of the notice.
It's not five days. It's not five days to get it completed. It's, it's five days from it being posted to bring it up to the teacher to start making a plan.
But you need a stop date because you'll have kids on June 13th going, I want to make up that summative from November because.
But that's why, and that's why we specifically left it with from the posting of the grade. And again, we have a responsibility within our schools to communicate when we're posting major grades, summative grades, whether that's through handing them back or if you're not handing them back through saying, hey, grades on such and such an essay are in power school now. Check them out. And with an expectation as well that kids are regularly checking their power.
Admittedly though, I turned off the notifications on my power school app because they were just all the time with three kids. But I was getting notifications every time a grade went in. There was a notification that I got.
I signed up for every single report. I signed up for every single report and it never.
Has to check it. I only get it from one class.
It only gives you the current total grade. It doesn't tell you when a new assignment is graded. That's all it does.
But when that comes out, doesn't that mean something?
It doesn't point out if it's different than the previous report. So I would get a report every day. And I wouldn't be able to tell which is new. You'd have to go through and compare it to the report that was received before.
So Mary, I, I think what I'm hearing, because I think from the board is we all have different experiences with power school. And if there's some consistent approach that all parents can take, I would appreciate that type of instruction.
Because I assume when the grade, I get the thing, and maybe you did too, Andrew, that that's meant, grade was put in and the grade has changed, either gone up or gone down. That's why I'm getting these things during the day. That's what I think it is. I don't know.
If I can just try to get a little clarity, but Heidi, you're talking high school because I want to make sure we're not talking in difference between schools.
I got LMS and GMS updates whenever there was a grade put in. Again, to be clear, this was the app update. Like I got an app notification on my phone.
You got a notification when there was a grade change. I don't think it was an assignment.
But that's how it changes the grade is an assignment.
If you see a summative and if there's a material change, you're going to see it in the grade quickly.
Well, I mean, not toward the end of the year because that has a cumulative of the whole darn year. It's very likely you don't, you won't see it. If the grade is the same, if you have a B plus for three, three quarters and you get another B, or if you have a D and you get another D, like you won't see that.
What, what I'd suggest is because we use staff sometimes to help us understand it. Because you have to have somebody in the system to see what's coming through. But Tara, maybe if you come in and meet with Mary and just, you know, work it through, look at the profile. Because my understanding is what I'm hearing from Heidi is the way it should be operating, which is you get those notifications of a grade. Because we had this going, trust me, I was dealing with this in Bedford, which was on power school. And it was like ding, 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 ding. And some people were saying, my gosh, there's so much coming in. I'm getting flooded. And so I just want to make sure that we got the right setting set up. So, and then.
I mean, I was on the committee for over a year and I brought this up and it, there was not a solution, but I'm happy. If there is a solution, then fine. But like I said, I've signed up for all of them.
Yeah. Let, let's just make sure because the, the, the other is I want to make sure it's consistent between the three schools. And.
But I think that the, the crux of it is like Mary said, the communication, you know, the student should know that the grades are going in. And, you know, I, I, I'm a relatively hands off parent when it comes to my kids' grades. You know, we encourage them to do their best and do retakes if, if they feel like they're ready to do them. But that's their responsibility to, to contact the teacher and to set up.
And I think that was.
Especially.
That was a lot of the teachers.
That was a lot of the, you know, is that yes, having that alert for parents is important and good. But ultimately, especially at the high school level where this is the bigger issue, the responsibility into, to be checking really needs to fall to the kids.
They'll all be talking about it when they walk in the classroom.
I mean, if there, is there an alert from the student portal that could be set up? You know, I mean, I don't need to have the parent.
But that's what I think it is when it goes in. I only get it from one class and I signed up from all. I don't check.
If there's a setting my kids aren't getting.
It might be worthwhile having a, maybe a section in the handbook or something that goes out to parents and students at the beginning of the year that says, you know, we recommend checking power school once a week, twice a week, whatever it is. So that you don't miss those updates.
Seriously, like I don't know our district code. I can't even get in on my.
It's on the website.
So I think one, one other thing is there's a difference between what the system generates and maybe what the phone generates, right? So.
Yes.
Which is I was told, don't go off of the phone. So I, I, I didn't log in.
So Tara, let's, if, if you're willing to commit, I think we can just sit and sort of try to figure that out and see what the experience is. And it'll run the gamut from your phone's going to blow up with lots of dinging going on to, okay, that's too much. I don't need.
Well, not anymore because they're out of school, but.
Yeah, well, for next year.
Well, and the other piece is with the, I'm going to suggest that we wait until July.
Update.
Yeah.
Because the update, I don't know what the impact is going to be on that.
Yeah, I, I'm talking for the start of next year. So we're going to provide direction to parents. The time to get it developed is over the summer. So we wait for the July update. We make it clear, you know, we could film some videos of here's how to do it, right?
Right. And I've actually talked to Andrea about that and getting some, I mean, we have, there are a lot of videos on how to access power school right now on the site. But she's committed to updating them with the new thing and to really do some work on the app.
Let's be, most people do it on their phones. That's where I get my, oh my God, Michael McDonald's not there today. Uh oh.
So I would support this if there's a way to note, get the notification. If there's not, I don't support. I, this is the one, the one holdup I have on this.
Tara, one other thing that I, I, I'm just going to raise, I am very concerned about teachers who are not putting grades in a timely manner. So there's another factor in that, you know, I give an assignment, I say it's due here. And it goes weeks and weeks for some staff before it even gets posted. And I think there's another piece that we want to tighten up on, you know, and I, I'm prepared to come forward with a expectation that if it's not graded and returned and posted within two weeks, it doesn't count. And just to draw a line in the sand, because it's very frustrating. I, I, I hear you Liz, I hear you. And it's not all assignments with all teachers. But what I'm hearing is when I'm getting phone calls from parents who are saying, you know, it's been eight weeks and we don't know how, what happened with that. And I log in and I look, you know, and it's like, and then I send it off to the principal and say, you gotta resolve this issue.
I mean, I think there was a senior that I'm aware of that this issue happened with and.
And so, you know, what Mary and I have talked about is two weeks is a reasonable amount of time to grade and return. And then you could almost change this to 15 days in the due date.
Oh, I see.
You see?
Yes. Which would actually be easier to track.
Exactly. So it's a, you know, we're ongoing dialogue. I totally hear your concern about this. And I, you know, we don't want to create some layer of trying to figure this out and dispute resolution about how many days is it? But, but we have to get better at keeping students and families updated on student progress. So I think that's really the, the gist of what we're trying to accomplish with this.
So were you looking for board approval with, for this tonight? So we.
Well, that was in the initial plan because I had asked for feedback when I brought it.
Right.
In April and didn't get any feedback. So I, I was, but if it, I'm, I'm not sure that we're ready to do that.
What's the consensus of the board? Are we ready to?
I don't know how I feel, but it's up to you guys.
I'm fine to put it in please, till we approve it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the reassessment policy.
Procedure.
Procedure, small P, policy.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other questions or comments? All right, send them. Yep. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Four one zero.
But I still think you should go in and.
Yeah, we're still, it's.
They can't see what we see because I think I went in there once. I go, this is what I see and they have no idea.
Yeah.
It's different. And so.
Different. Exactly.
Like I said, I've sat, I've sat with Andrea trying to play around to see what that looks like. But we sort of have backed off since there is the transition. I'm not, I don't want to make steps. I don't want to make steps that work now and that aren't going to work in August. Right. So.
Yeah.
I mean, that's ultimately where we are.
So I guess if there's a change and we do need to make a change to the, the dates.
If we need to, if we need to make a change based on what we find out in power school, then I will bring it back.
It has to be consistent. Not some teacher will accept them 14 days, some will accept them 13. Well, I guess you could.
No, I like, I like this policy because it's district wide and it's, it's very clear and consistent. Thank you for that.
Thank you. One of the other things coming out of grading and reporting, and it's in process that this is not something that needs any kind of a vote at this point. It's just a, for your information. We've had a lot of discussion in grading and reporting about the, the alignment between the portrait of a learner traits and descriptors and the work study practices. So as a grading and reporting committee, we have voted to move forward with using our portrait of a learner descriptors and traits as our work study practices. Right now they're two separate things, but the meaning and the actual intent behind them is very similar. And these, these we feel are reflect more what we as a community and as a, a, a school and as a district. I mean, the committee that wrote these was kids, parents, community members, staff, admin, like all together. So just, this is just a point of information that we are going to move forward with these as our work study practices. And if I can just finish the two things, we are still working on a grade scale for it. That won't be, we, where work study practices don't go in right away. We have a little bit of time in September to finalize some of that. And one of the things that we are doing is so the, the document that I have linked in here is just some language that we worked through. And now we're working on creating I can, not I can, excuse me, I will statements for each level. So that it's putting the ownership and we've talked a lot in grading and reporting that the ownership on this has to, has to shift to the children.
We also touched upon giving it teeth.
Giving, yeah, I hate that.
Correct. Giving it teeth because let's say Mary Widman is on her phone the whole time and she isn't following and she has to redo all her summatives. That should come. Like they're not paying attention. They need extra support because they're not paying attention.
And that is an ongoing conversation. The thing is that is not something we can decide in grading and reporting because it doesn't make sense what you're going to do at the high school.
Right.
Is not going to be the same thing that you're going to do to give it teeth at the middle school or the elementary school. So that, the, all three buildings have been tasked and we talked about it in our admin meeting again.
What the consequences.
What, before the start of the school year, that has to be in place. My expectation is that we have to have that in place. Correct.
But it needs to have documentation behind it is what the biggest thing. Oh, I called, I called your mom this day and said, you don't put your phone away. You were sleeping in class this day.
There were two things that, that I've tasked the building admin with in connection to this. It's to figure out with their buildings, what the expectation is in terms of inputting it or tracking it. And then what, how are you giving it teeth? And that's, those two things are going to be the most important to it. But again, because, you know.
Subjective.
Well, this will help take out some of the subjectivity because it's more specific than what we currently have. But I think just the, the idea behind giving it, giving it teeth. I know. I just don't know another way to, you know, if, and please don't, don't quote me on this. But if you were to say, take eligibility away at the high school, that doesn't work at the elementary school. So it can't be.
At the middle school. It would work at the middle. Not at the elementary school. No Lego league for you, buddy.
So it's not, it's not like, correct. It has to be age appropriate, which is why I've really pushed to make it building specific.
Opportunities to change behaviors.
Did we find out if it's on the transcript or not? Our work study practice grades?
We talked about it and I got two different answers. So I'm, I'm not sure. Yeah, it is still to be investigated.
Cause I think that would be an interesting.
That is another piece too.
That's something that a college will see, you know, your work study practices. Are you on time? Are you turning things respectful?
Well, even if you look at our, look at our, our, our traits, it's perseverance and adaptability, it's communication. Like if, if those are listed out with, you know, not so great scores, those are, that sends a message. So.
Wow.
So again, that's still some work in progress, but I just wanted to keep the board up to date on that.
How do you grade?
Grade what?
I mean, you're working on a grade scale for this portrait of a learner, but how do you?
So currently we have a, a rubric that talks about student independence with their work study practices. Like can they, are they doing it consistently and are they doing it independently? Do they need prompting? So it's a level of sort of gradual release. We've talked about that might not be with the way these are worded, that might not be the best way to, to do it. So it's not, we, we've sort of talked about the fact that what we currently are doing works with the, or can work with the way they're written currently. But shifting to that more specific and more student focused, we're going to have to come up with a, a new.
Measure.
Measure.
Metric.
Yeah, thank you. So I did put summer school competency recovery on there. We are, our numbers are still in flux. I, I actually had a document link to link in there that had, you know, our numbers so far. But it was changing every day. So I decided to pull that. But our plans are in place. We'll have the competency recovery solidified by Monday. They're saying they'll know, they'll have a better handle on students that still need to do coursework at the high school in terms of the summer scholars. I believe we have about 10 students at this point, eight to 10 students at LMS that are participating in summer scholars. We have E S Y going on. So there's just a lot of moving parts. But it's fallen into place. So. One of the things that I, has been on my list all year and as we know, this year has been a lot of moving parts. But I am committed this summer and so to start off the next school year with more information as we've come to more decisions as a grading and reporting committee on educating parents in the community on competency based grading on our platforms, things of that nature. I linked in a draft of a grading pamphlet in there that we, that I worked on last summer, believe it or not. And it just never got solidified enough that I, I was comfortable giving it out to parents. So I just, just so that you can kind of see some of the things that, that are my goals for the summer. We've talked about taking some of the slideshows, making them into video tutorials. When I have a little bit more time this summer, I, that's, that is one of the things that I will be working on. And also we've committed to making sure that we have either a presentation as part of like open house or parent info tables, things of that nature. So that's just going to be another way. And my goal is to have an info night for parents, especially with the switch to power school or the switch in power school to kind of do a combo competency based and power school update in each of the buildings in the early fall. So. All right. Updated curriculum. Updated curriculum review guide. We are at year, this is the end of year four. So when I came on board, I wrote a curriculum review cycle that got completely derailed with COVID, but we're trying to get it back on track. Um, and so I just sort of revised it. Social studies right now is actually drafted K through twelve. We're, we're doing some cleanup during live to learn. I need to review the documents. My goal is that those will be to the board in August. So we're in a good place there. We're making progress in ELA K through twelve. We've sort of put that at the, at the middle school and high school, we are making significant progress. We kind of put it on the back burner at the elementary because of the fact that we were, we're piloting programs next year because our, our, um, contract with Journeys actually is up this year. But we extended it one more year because they didn't want to do a math pilot and an ELA pilot at the same time, and I totally respect that. So that's where we're looking. My goal for next year is to continue and finish ELA. To, we've done a lot of work on Spanish on the curriculum. We should have that done by the end of next year and to get started on science. Uh, I put science on hold this year because of the fact that we had so much turnover in our science department at the middle school and high school. So, um, we'll start that process this year and we have a lot of the science teachers coming in during live to learn to actually start the process. And the other thing that has come up that I really, I've, I've met with Val and talked to Val quite a bit about is, um, getting some alignment with our counseling curriculum. And, um, and, and really building what, what does that look like in all three buildings and all three buildings? And what is that progression? So that is on my goal for next year. Um, and then you'll see, we'll start to get into twenty-three, twenty-four, get into some of our, um, more of our unified arts. PE and health will probably start, I know Shannon and I already started doing some work on health. Because of the new standards that have come out and, uh, just some, some informal start. So we may be further along with that, um, next year than waiting till the following year, but, um, the art, music, business, computer science and tech, we have a lot of those individual courses that have been revised. But to actually revise and, and look at the whole alignment, the vertical alignment is, is really what I'm talking about there. And then we'll be back to reviewing math again. We review them every year. I mean, they're current, they're living and breathing documents. That's, that to me is a really important piece. I ask the teachers, so math is the only one that's been approved at this point, but I have asked them to, at the end of the year, give me feedback on what's working, what's not. Are there things we need to move around? And we've made some adjustments. They've been really minor in terms of like just shifting things from one unit to another. But that ultimately to keep our curriculum up to date is the most important part is to do that every year, not just on a set cycle. So any questions, concerns on the updated review cycle?
Is this all inclusive of everything that needs to be reviewed? Because I know that we just approved the new curriculum policy, I think last time that said, uh, curriculum has to be reviewed up to every five years, so.
But I think the other piece and, and I know that policy didn't change, so we didn't update the policy. But to me, we're reviewing it at the end of every year. So we shouldn't get to the point and we are, we did this year because we, until we get the full revision, the full alignment done. We're, we're still in a cycle, but I think when we actually get all of that done, it's going to be an annual review. And, you know, if we get to a point where new standards come out, then we have to go back.
Another change will come, trust me.
Yep, I know. I am skipping Spanish for the moment. Perk, we have four things that were passed through perk to be able to, um, that need your, well, three of them need your approval and one is just a point of information. So, um, we do have a policy that new courses are reviewed at the end of three years. So I've linked in there just the feedback that we've gotten from the teachers on the courses that are up, that, that this would be the third year since their approval. So we had three, we have advanced women's self-defense, we have computer animation, and we have the Vietnam War era. All but Vietnam has run each year. And, um, the reason that Vietnam did not run this year was we put it as an alternating elective with World War Two. So, um, the feedback from the teachers has been that the, the courses are, are running well. There have been some tweaks that they've had to make in terms of materials. But no, no major concerns or complaints and the numbers for them have been pretty steady.
My son took both, loved them. I told him I'm taking Europe wars and battle and conflict.
I noticed, um, Mr. McDonough had for computer animation, he had a comment to update the curriculum.
Yes, he is, um, the thing with the technology is that that changes so quickly. So three years ago, you know, what we originally had, what he had originally put forward, there are different tools and different things that are, are how the approach is now, that's more current. So, um, he is, he's at Live to Learn every year updating one portion or one of the courses. And this is the one that he wants to tackle this year. So the other three are approvals. Sustainability, so this sort of, this will be a bigger discussion a little bit later. But, um, we know that we are struggling to find a fax teacher, uh, at LMS. That is not an LMS thing, that is a statewide thing. There are, I know people across the state that are looking for high school and middle school fax teachers and not, there's just not applicants. A lot of places have gotten rid of their programs because they don't have the enrollment numbers. And it's making it really, really hard for schools across the state to fill those positions. So we are looking to try and be creative in terms of what to do to get at those, those standards really. And we have a couple ideas. One of them, uh, is the sustainability course. Which is sort of a science mixed with a lot of the career exploration that's in fax and, along with, yeah, so, um, and we thought this could be a good opportunity because of the fact that we are, you know, our middle school with the renovation is going to be a, you know, a, a really, we're going for green school. Like the, how, that's some real hands-on opportunity there for the kids to look at systems and, um, and climate and the impact and how do we have we really use that net zero school to be able to, to have some hands-on learning for our kids? So this is just an overview of what the course is. A little later I will show you a crosswalk too, so you can make, so we can see as we make, have a little bit more discussion about that. Where our fax standards are currently being taught or where they can be taught depending on the avenue that we choose to go down.
So there are required fax standards for middle school.
You mix in with health and things like that, yeah.
If I understand, this isn't in the next year's budget, correct? So the costs associated?
So right now, the cost associated with it, it is not in next year's budget, but it should be. If, if this would be what we choose to do in, in lieu of fax, it should be budget neutral. Because i- if not possibly, I don't know what the fax budget looks like at the middle school. But I think we're going to have in terms of the materials, I think we'll have a lot of it in-house because of the ongoing work.
So, so what is in next year's budget is one teacher? And a budget to support.
To support that course.
The materials and fax tends to be a, a material intensive course, you know, cooking supplies, et cetera. So, so those items are in the budget and then the board would have the prerogative to redirect those for.
Choose to, to replace with.
So there is a teacher identified that is available to teach?
So that's, we're gonna have that conversation a little bit later, but that is part of our, the, this, this, we would need a science teacher for, not a fax teacher. So we would have, we would be looking to bring in another science teacher. I've heard that maybe we have a couple new applicants at the time that we, we didn't. So I don't, you know, it hasn't been the pools for, a lot of these are not, haven't been super deep. So, um, it's a bigger discussion connected to the Spanish discussion as well.
On what grade level?
So I know you're, you're asking for an approval, but I don't know that I'm in a position to approve.
So I'm asking, I'm not asking for an approval that we run this. I'm asking for a conceptual approval of if, basically it's a curriculum approval. Would this, would the board support this course? If we needed to run it, is basically what I'm looking at.
But that's an approval, isn't it?
It's an approval and it's assuming that we have a position for it, which we, I just heard we don't.
We have many programs in the curriculum that.
That don't run. And we're not, we're not necessarily going to run this. I'm just looking for a program at, like the curriculum based approval, not the staffing based, not the budgetary, just. So middle school doesn't have a program of studies. The high school does. If this was a high school course, we would be looking for approval of the course to add as a choice in the program of studies. We're looking for this to be a possible choice to, as a replacement for fax if we don't, we can't find the fax.
Right, but it's a replacement choice impacting next year, impacting starting September potentially, right? Of which there's not a budgeted position.
Yes, there is. There's a budgeted position.
For fax, not for a science teacher.
But that position, that fax position would become a science position.
I view that as a new position. I don't view that, if fax is an existing position of science, if you're asking for an additional science, I view that as a new position and the town should vote on that.
But it's not a science course, it's, it's.
But I just heard we need a science teacher.
Doesn't fax stand for family and consumer sciences?
It, it is a different certification. I mean, family and consumer sciences is a different. I believe there are no longer programs in New Hampshire. So somebody says, I wanna be a fax teacher, so you used to go to Keene, they had the only program, Keene eliminated the program. So the pipeline of future fax teachers is going to be very complicated. So, so what, so here's where we are. We have the fax teacher in budget. We have the teaching position. The kids have a rotation for that UA in their schedule because they need somewhere to go for that period of time, right? We can't hire a teacher for that. So Jen thought, okay, what about the sustainability? There really, sustainability could be taught by anybody because, you know, we have said, somebody with a science background makes the most sense. But it's really not a science course. It's sort of a com, it's a really an integrated course of, but we think somebody with a science background would be best adapted for it. But frankly, if somebody comes along and has a real interest in that area and is certified somewhere else, that's okay too. It's a course. The other conversation, so I'm gonna leap ahead if I may. The other conversation is that we have found, remember, you've already hired a Spanish teacher for the middle school, right? We found another Spanish teacher who is interested in coming here. And we have said, maybe, maybe Spanish.
The other option would, that we've looked at is, do we bring in a second Spanish teacher? And have the intro to Spanish, which is, which is a cultural based course. Anyways, we have a curriculum written for it, but focus on, you know, more of the, when you look at the fax standards, which I have linked in there as a crosswalk, do we look at more of the, um, the, the foods, the, the nutrition part? Like a lot of, a lot of our fax standards are absorbed by our health curriculum. And, and if you look at the middle school, um, they are linked in, might as well just jump there. Under Spanish, there's the FCS crosswalk. So what you'll see there is that competencies for the, there are four basically competencies for middle school fax. Comprehend concepts, which is students will comprehend concepts relevant to improvement of their lives and community. Apply techniques, students will apply knowledge and techniques in the form of life skills that are vital to living and working in a diverse global society. Analyze impact, students will analyze information, behaviors and influences that impact their lives and community. And evaluate characteristics, students will evaluate resources, products and outcomes in order to make decisions and fine tune skills that will improve their lives and communities. Those are the four overarching. On all of those standards that I've copied and pasted in there, if you go up to the top and read it, it says that the way the middle school is structured, it's those four. And a variety of the standards from all of the different, uh, from the independent living, career exploration, uh, early childhood development, foods and nutrition and relationships. So I put all of them in here to crosswalk so that you can see where we are currently or could be possibly hitting the standards. Um, and you'll see in there that, you know, a lot of the foods ones could be hit in health, they could be hit in intro to Spanish.
Let me ask the big question, what other problem would that solve, Mary, if we had two Spanish teachers?
If we were to bring in another Spanish teacher, if it would be, we would be able to keep the seventh grade program, which was the goal. I, I have to, you know, I, I will take responsibility for the fact that I did not see this as a programmatic change because prior to me coming on board, we had seventh grade intro to Spanish, eighth grade Spanish one, and it was a choice. So we, as, as I saw it, we were reverting back to something that we had done previously. Now, we brought a committee together. It, what, this wasn't, look, my background is Spanish. I am in no way, shape or form trying to eliminate opportunities for kids to take language. So I, I wanna make that public because I had a lot of people who questioned that. Our goal actually is to build the program. And the only way to do that is to offer it younger and offer more opportunity. When we talked about this, when we met as a committee and it was myself, it was middle school administration, high school administration and our two current Spanish teachers. We said, what, what does this look like long-term? And long-term would be that at least five through twelve, we have the offerings. Short-term, we couldn't find a Spanish teacher last year, that's why there were no offerings. So we didn't wanna come to the board and say, we wanna add two Spanish teachers next year because I, I'll be honest, I wasn't sure we were gonna get one. We were lucky, we fell on one right away, great candidate, and we have another one right now that would, would be an amazing addition. So that long-term, it, it didn't change the curriculum. So from, from my lens, from a curriculum lens, it wasn't something that needed to go through perk or needed to come forward for board approval. That's my mistake.
But this sounds like a win-win for everybody if we're covering all the fax competencies through other things like health and culture of the, of the Spanish, the Spanish culture. Yeah, I.
Well, it, and students, the same opportunity.
Correct. The only, eh, the reality is the way we had it set up with every eighth grader taking Spanish and having to take Spanish. Here's the reality, not all eighth graders, not all kids want to take language and it's not a graduation requirement. Now, do I think it's good for all kids to take language? Absolutely. Do I think it's good for all kids to take Spanish? You bet I do. I mean, I started this year as one of our two, our high school Spanish teachers. But that was sort of the, the thought process behind it. This does make it a win-win because we will, all the seventh graders will get it, will have more of an opportunity. The idea was to also offer it as best in fifth and sixth. So that fifth and sixth would get some exposure to it. All seventh graders would get a semester, just an intro cultural piece. And then have the choice to take it in eighth grade. This would allow us to open it, open up more sections in eighth grade.
But you don't have to, you could take it. I know one of my sons took it in eighth grade and again in ninth grade. He kind of struggled in eighth grade.
Yeah.
And it didn't really count. So he took it in ninth grade and he got a better grade because he had background and he didn't have the same teacher.
Yeah.
I thought last year, um, when my kids were in eighth grade, they had, well, there were two sections. There was an intro. And then there was a Spanish one that, that could count toward high school. So that's why when, you know, so this year, when it was only going to be offered to half, that it was definitely a loss.
The intro, the intro course that was taught in eighth grade was really a very similar course to the, to the level one course. Uh, it's just a little bit slower. It might not have covered as much. Um, but if you look at our curriculum for, for intro, it should be more of a cultural exploratory piece.
So just from the budget angle, I just want to make sure that we're clear on this. I think we have to stop thinking of it as a fax, a sustainability, a Spanish, so UA teacher. And right now hiring a fax UA impossible. We tried to hire somebody for sustainability and we have not landed there. And feast or famine as it goes, we went from couldn't find a Spanish teacher last year to found two rock stars. And what we'd like to do is bring in the, the rock star and develop the Spanish program. Fill out everybody's schedule, make the offering to seventh and eighth. It's budget neutral because it's a UA teacher. It's just which UA. And to Liz's point, it, in my eyes, I love the term win-win because that's how I'm feeling about where we are right now. Um, but we didn't feel that I could bring, uh, I didn't feel that I could bring a name forward tonight. Because we had to have this discussion and we had to respond to the correspondence that we perceived. And we had to understand how we got to where we arrived. And, and then I said to Mary, oh, and it's all under your report. So here we are, but.
So to make it clear, so if, if this were to be approved, to have this additional, um, UA teacher to be a language or Spanish teacher, um, all eighth graders would have the option of opting into Spanish that want to take it.
As well as seventh.
And all seventh.
Yeah.
Seventh would be an option.
Be a choice.
So they have to be introduced.
Well.
And it would actually go down to fifth and sixth through best.
Right. It's, they're trying to do that now, but we would be able to extend it to more of the sixth graders if we had the two positions. Currently, in as it would be anyways, that what I don't know is with the, with the intro in Spanish, uh, in seventh, um, how that goes up against like band and I, I, I don't have my head wrapped around and that, their schedule in that sense yet. So when I say it's open to all, it may not fit with some kids' schedules.
So will they be able just to pick up in eighth grade?
Yeah.
Oh, God.
And some will start, we'll still have Spanish one in ninth grade. There will be some who wait until nine.
So I, I agree. This is a win-win. You know, early in my tenure as a board member, we cut the French program at the high school and my view of it was because we didn't have a French program at the middle school, enrollment went down and we ended up cutting that program. I know, I know this is a win-win and I know providing world languages earlier and earlier is a win for our kids. I just really, really, really wish there was a choice. I really wish we could diversify and give kids exploration in two languages.
I don't disagree with that, but I will tell you that French is dying out across this state. There are very few schools that can, if they still have it, can staff it. And that's the problem.
What are the alternate languages then? If someone's offering more than Spanish, what else is offering?
Big places like Pinkerton that can offer Chinese and stuff like that. Mandarin. Look back in the day, you'd take Latin.
Um, a lot of schools have switched to sign language if they're going to offer an alternative language.
See, I just think having those, I don't know, if it's a best or an exploratory course, I think just giving these kids options rather than a one-track feeder, you know, feeding right into everybody gets Spanish.
But here's, this is, this is my concern looking at it big picture. It's not a requirement. So our kids don't have to take it. That's why our numbers are not, one of the reasons why we don't have huge numbers at the high school.
Taking Spanish, you mean?
I, in language in general. That's why we didn't for French and we didn't for Spanish. Um, I assume French predates me.
Yeah.
But.
There was a lot going on there.
Yeah.
Me too.
But it's, we have kids that take it because we have scholars require it, because college, colleges require it. It's hard to sustain a, a program and you would have to have the staffing. That's my concern because we ran into this in my last district with German. We had a German program for a million years and we couldn't sustain the staffing to be able to give the kids the three years.
Then it will go up to the high school. Then we need French teachers at the high school.
Well, and I went to a high school of the similar, same size, you know, very similar size. And we had French or Spanish. We had one Spanish teacher and we had one French teacher. And kids could choose between the two of them. I think the reason we have to have two Spanish teachers is because everybody takes Spanish. So I'm, you know, I'm still, I still, I feel very strongly that we should give kids an option.
I will just, I'm going to just talk from my own personal experience. So we had in our middle school, French, Spanish, German and Latin. We had an exploratory program. Our kids got all four of those before they made the decision as to what they wanted to do. We have a Spanish program and a really weak French program right now.
That's what happened at Campbell High School when I was there.
And that, that's, and you're talking, that's at a school that's.
French and middle school.
No, it's because the.
If, if I may just, I'll, I'll speak because I did a lot of work on this when I was in Bedford.
Yes.
And Lurgio Middle School offered, uh, Latin, Mandarin, French and Spanish. And over time Mandarin had, had disappeared and Latin had disappeared. And, and the shift had gone to about 25% Spanish and most students were choosing, I'm sorry, 25% French. Most students were choosing Spanish. I think we have to deal with the fact there's been a demographic shift in the United States. And if people say what language will be most useful?
I understand.
It, it's Spanish. And so people are voting with their feet on what they think will be helpful to them. Um, and so, you know, we studied that data and it's, there are still opportunities. We can look at V-Labs and other ways that a student can. There are plenty of online tools. You know, I think we can continue to get creative with ELOs and the way that we can support students. But I hear you and I'm speaking, you know,
I know, I know.
My ancestors went into Montreal in 1650.
Mine came from Montreal.
I get it. I get it. My grandfather was a native speaker, born and raised in Quebec. So, um, but the reality is, you know, I took French and I.
I did too.
You know, it comes in helpful on my, every five years when I go to Canada. But I guess the, the key thing is, I think we have landed in a, a good position in terms of where to proceed. Um, and just want to make sure that the board is comfortable. I want to make sure Andrew's comfortable with the budgetary aspect of it. And the board, or everybody is comfortable with the direction we had because once we hired two people, you know, we shouldn't scale that back to one or zero again. We should stay committed to this is programmatically where we are with the middle school UA program.
I think this is fantastic. And I just want to say, I think the two teachers at the high school right now have brought a lot of passion into Spanish. The current teachers that are there, I can't say enough good things about them. And so having that momentum of two potential rock stars at the middle school, leading into those already two rock stars at the high school. I think this is a really good long-term plan. And I think, you know, similar how, similar to how we want some of our core classes, like the two social studies groups, kind of working together at LMS and CHS. I think Spanish, we kind of want that same coordination and collaboration, um, as they move up the chain. So I, I think this is a great solution. I think this.
Will make a lot of people happy.
So what's the ask from the board?
Um, I, so I really, the ask from the board is consensus for us to do our jobs, which is to, to hire, to come forward. Cause I, I think your vote is if we bring you forward a Spanish teacher and we didn't have consensus, we never had this conversation. We just had a long conversation at the point of nomination. We shouldn't do that. That's not fair to the individual. I think what we should be doing is saying, you know, all things considered, where we've been, I mean, we posted for fax in February.
It's one of the first positions.
You know, we've been after this all, all spring. And Jen is a pit bull when it comes to hiring. I can promise you, she is very, she knows what she wants and she goes after it. The fact that we're sitting here on the last day of school saying, here's what we think we is the best option to be prepared for next year.
Don't get me wrong. I am in support of this. I think this, the kids win with this. I think it's a great opportunity. I just, in my heart of hearts.
I hear what you're saying, Gina. I was a French person too. But I just don't think our budget, budget or the school size.
I'm going to speak from a language person and that you're not going to like this either.
I know.
To me, if we bring in another language, it wouldn't be French.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or maybe Chinese.
I, I think you look at Chinese, you look at, uh, you look at Mandarin.
I think sign is great.
Sign language.
Fantastic.
Something, I mean.
To the extent we can encourage, um, best to start to incorporate sign, again, just an introduction, three to four weeks.
I'm not saying, you know, it's not, it's not, look, I, I always tried to learn French and.
See, to me, I, I can read Spanish because I can.
Yeah, and I can, and I can understand French because.
A little dangerously, yeah.
How, how I feel.
Um, yeah. So I fully support this because world language and culture exposure is really good for all of our kids. And this, this expands the program.
Well, and if I may, just on the ASL comment, you know, when we were exploring IB, this is in, in Merrimack Valley back in those days, and you have to have a world language. I mean, it's part of the international baccalaureate. And so ASL, um, from a special ed angle, if you have kids who are not verbal, who have linguistic disabilities, but now you're doing a language that's kinesthetic. It's a whole different way of teaching. And so how do you make language accessible to all kids? You don't offer French and Spanish, two romantic languages. You offer Spanish and ASL because that's how you get accessibility.
I'm down with that. Let's do that. Okay.
We'll take that, but that would be a, a budget development that we'd have to do that.
Or best offering.
Yeah.
Okay. I did baby signs with my kids.
If that's the case, your curriculum review guide will need to be updated, right? Because Spanish is eight to 12.
Yes. Yeah, I didn't update that and I should have. It would be seven to 12.
With some five. So if this is taking the place of fax, does that then go to fifth grade?
Right, yeah.
Because fit, the sustainability course said fifth and seventh.
How many classes can I teach if I'm teaching different levels?
She had, Jen has some other plan, some other reshuffle.
Another shuffle.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that it would keep to seventh and eighth instead of fifth and seventh.
Okay.
I like the best exposure. That's a yes.
Okay, so I've lost and I knew that would happen, sorry.
Fourth grade reader?
Fourth grade reader. Yes, thank you. Um, so Perk has approved a fourth grade reader of Out of My Heart. It's a novel. It's actually one that they read. It's a sequel to one that they already read. Um, and so it's the new one and it's, it's a high interest book with kids.
Is this Out of My Mind?
So.
That's a good book.
They, um.
This is a sequel to Out of My Mind?
Yes.
That's awesome. Yes.
So, uh, that is what the fourth grade, actually it's Chris Tate, the reading specialist down there. It's proposing this for fourth grade.
I read this with Sophia and it's a great book.
So these need it, yeah, these need a vote.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve Out of My Heart as a curriculum resource for fourth grade moving forward. Any questions or comments? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose Epstein five zero zero. Okay.
So the next one, because I, you know, like to keep world language always on the forefront. Uh, so we are, we've, this went through perk as well. We've actually proposed to cut the world, the Spanish competencies from five to four. Uh, and the thought process behind it and the rationale behind it is that we've shifted with these, so these were written quite a while ago. We've shifted in instruction in world language to au, to authentic text and materials. We don't use a textbook. Um, we really focus on using what are authentic native cultural resources. Because of that, the adding the separate culture competency was sort of like a, a, it felt forced because that cultural competency is being hit all the time through the four key skills. So we're seeing this in ACTVOL, which is the so American Council of Teachers of Foreign Language. I always mess that up. But, um, they've shifted away from the separate counts, cultural competency to an embedded cultural competency. And, um, so that's.
Just feels backwards to me when you talk about world competency and you don't have culture as a part of it. I, I know what you're saying, how it's rolled into the others.
It's, it's not, the problem is it's not rolled in, in the way that some others are where you can really parse it out and score them separately. It's so ingrained in the reading, in the literature that they're doing, in the way that they're writing and in the, the texts that they're listening to that to actually get a separate score for that sometimes feels forced. And, um, as opposed to, they know that the kids are getting it by what they're demonstrating in their other competencies.
So this needs a motion? Do you need a board approval? You want to do it?
Sure. Before we do that, how are they comparing and contrasting?
How are they comparing and contrasting cultures?
Yeah.
Usually that would be done through tech, uh, like literary comparisons. So they may read, uh, uh, Spanish, just trying to think of some things that I've seen them do. Um, a Spanish folk tale that mirrors Romeo and Juliet. So they're reading the authentic text. And then part of what they're looking for them to do may be to compare and contrast what are, how does that literature compare to, you know, a traditional.
I mean, I saw it with Grace in terms of food, you know, they did a lot on.
That's what I think about that, right? It's food and experience.
But they still have the, I don't think they're going to get rid of that. It just won't be separately graded. So they're still going to have this.
That's what I think about culture. I think about the different parts of learning. Yeah.
Right. Um, it's just a shift in, shift in how they're experiencing it. I know when I started teaching, I mean, it was like listening, speaking, reading, writing, culture unit. You know, you'd, you'd, you'd learn all the vocabulary from the textbook. Yes, I'm old. I've been teaching that back in the late nineties.
Ecoute.
Whereas opposed to now, they're getting those vocabulary words through an authentic piece of literature. Even at the lower levels, they're just not reading the whole thing. They're reading excerpts of it. They're focused on, so it's just.
You haven't lived till you've seen a kid, high school record making tostadas in Spanish, trying to bake, cook and record themselves.
Trust me.
Very scary.
Scariest, scariest day of the semester was always when it was food day. Because it was the one time that every kid in the class made sure they did the, the project and they wanted you to try it. Oh, yum. That looks great. You can't say no.
You would say it in Spanish though.
Yeah, I would say see.
You want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the revision to the world language competencies.
So I second it. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed Epstein five zero zero.
Thank you very much. All right. So just quickly I put in there because I don't want to have a report without some data for you guys. All right. So just quickly I put in there because I don't want to have a report without some data for you guys. Um, we did finish up our iReady.
Spring testing.
Okay, I'll wait. This is my thing. I wanna know how thirty-seven out of eighty-eight first graders got tested. Why didn't they finish the test? Thirty, and reading sixty-seven out of eighty-eight. Thirty-seven out of eighty-eight students completed the math iReady. Sixty-seven of the reading in first grade completed the testing out of eighty-eight.
Where, yeah.
On the spreadsheet you sent.
Oh, sixty-seven out of eighty-eight.
Oh, I do see it, yeah.
Over in the column it says student success slash.
Are they not finished yet? Well, now they are.
I'm iReady guru at my school.
Hold on, hold on. Where, where is this?
The math assessment for GMS.
Just click the link to the first one.
Because the slow.
Over in the last column.
Maybe one, two, three days to do it.
Assessed in total.
Yeah, okay, that's what you're saying. So grade one. Seven out of eighty-eight, grade one.
Yeah, they should have been done at that point. Was this pulled mid, mid testing? This was, this was pulled a week and a half ago, so they may not have been done. Yeah, so, well, there'll be a more update because I don't consider this valuable data if half the kids didn't finish the test.
Um, so our goal is the.
Although I love seeing growth, I'm not gonna lie.
When are we bringing the data?
Bring, we bring, we'll bring the district wide data, the schools will bring the district wide data, which will include this forward in August.
I like what I'm seeing, but to me, that, I like to see ninety percent or above completion.
Liz, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, you are correct.
Because every child, no matter what their educational level should be tested.
Right.
And in my case, most of the kids that take the longest time, they, and iReady is so good. That's why I love it so much. They have brain breaks and they have games. And it's painful to watch, but they finish it. It won't, I just don't think this comes.
Yeah, I agree. I didn't touch that.
I would.
I guess I don't know how to read this.
Well, this is the first time I'm seeing it, so I think it's good to just.
GM, LMS is almost done.
Yeah, so now GMS did start later with their assessment, so.
It makes sense.
But I still think even with, with, if you're looking at the numbers, the growth that we're seeing in both buildings is, is impressive.
Because it mostly peaks in the winter from what I've noticed and it doesn't, it looks like it's still going up here, which is impressive.
Yeah, um, typically that's what my experience has been. It peaks in the winter and then it drops in the spring. Um, but LMS, ours did grow.
That's amazing.
And at GMS as well.
Did you do it in May?
We did, so they did it after SAS testing.
Yeah, we did ours together. It was brutal.
It was a long.
Yeah, we did it. After the DC trip.
I'm, I'm being, I'm being messaged by Dan right now, but I can't.
Hi, Dan.
Sorry, Dan.
Can you explain a little bit the difference between the annual typical growth and the annual stretch growth?
Yeah, so, um, the, the typical growth is. Did I pull, I'm just happy if there's any. So the, the, the typical growth is the growth for a student, uh, based on the, like, the typical, the, the baseline of kids at that. Like testing at the same time, whereas the stretch is, my understanding, and I may be misquoting this. It's the, like, looking at what the, what, if they had done equal to what some of the highest, highest kids at that same, again, same testing, same.
Well, it's a continuum, right? I mean, so it's just better or faster growth than the typical growth. That's my claim.
All right, thank you.
And I, I think I asked this in the fall, but I'll ask it again. Do parents get a printout of their kids' iReady data? I know they get the SAS testing that.
So they should have gotten, um, today, what was sent home or what should have been sent home is the SAS testing and the iReady reports.
I haven't opened the backpack yet.
Yeah, he said that would be in the.
I think it might still be in the car.
I received it.
Oh.
I knew that they were going, I know Dan put him in the, in the kid shuttles today to go home and, uh, I know Jen was doing the same.
Perfect. Thank you.
Not in the shuttles though, cause they don't do that at middle school.
Right.
Well, I mean, at least from what we're seeing here, it seems like, you know, I know the teachers were excited to use this. They had some training on how to make these individual, you know, decisions about how to help the kids and it's, at least from these numbers, it seems like it's working.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm really happy with our shift to this tool.
I wanna see red and this is phenomenal. Phenomenal.
It's great.
If you look at the, the placement distribution, just looking at where it was at winter and where it is now.
Yeah, huge.
So at the, um, the August meeting, we'll kind of reconcile. You'll get this data reported out more specifically. You'll have SAS data, you'll have, you know, other indicators that will all come in. So, you know, it'll be a deeper dive into the data at that meeting in August. But this was an early glimpse at where we are. Obviously we'll get it updated and make sure we've got at least ninety percent.
So if I look at math, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding. Right, so under math for GMS.
Yeah.
I just taken one. And if I look at current placement distribution in that bar graph on the first page, the upper right?
Yep.
If I read this correctly, it says thirty percent of our kids are one grade level below.
Andrew, say it again. You went into math or reading?
Math, GMS.
Math, GMS. I'm, I'm there now, thank you.
Current placement distribution. So the bar graph there on the upper right, right? And I look at the yellow and I say, all right, thirty percent, so thirty percent equals one grade, grade level below where they should be.
Right.
So I, I would say it's even further. Thirty-two percent are below grade level.
But that doesn't count the flags. Are there flags in there? Because a red flag means the kid rushed in that, and a yellow flag, I, they what rushed.
You can, you can dig it. They're not in this report. I just.
There are things, like you'll know, I know that Andrew could do better than second grade math, but look at that red flag. He rushed through it. Andrew didn't wanna do his test today.
And if I'm reading this correctly, the yellow says from sixty-five percent. So last time that was a sixty-five percent was yellow and now only thirty percent is yellow. So there was a growth of twenty-five, thirty-five percent now moved into green, presumably either moved into green or red.
Yeah, well. So we improved thirty percent is really the metric.
Right. So if you look at the, the forty-one percent that are at or above grade level, that was five percent last time.
Right.
So there's a huge growth in.
It's about thirty-five percent across the board.
That's good to know. You're catching up.
Very good.
Yeah.
But recognizing there's still work to do.
Of course. There's always, always work to do. And again, this is just one diagnostic point. So.
And it's not even complete because.
Right, yeah.
It's not the most up to date numbers.
Dan was sending me the updates, but I can't get them open.
Okay.
Is there SAS testing in math for fifth grade? Will there be another data checkpoint?
Yes.
Okay. Through eight.
Okay.
Yes.
So SAS is done three through eight, except science is, uh, five, eight.
Five, eight and eleven. Okay.
Cause I see triple digit growth for grade six, seven and eight in math. Yeah, a hundred and sixty-eight percent, a hundred and thirty-eight percent, if I'm reading this correctly.
Yep.
But seventy-two percent for grade five. So there's SAS.
That mirrors our data.
That mirrors the data, okay.
So now switching gears, just clicking through these now that I understand. LMS reading. And current placement distribution. There's quite a high percentage one grade level below. Twenty-seven, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty-eight, fifty-three.
Do we have that per grade level? I mean, it's not in this report. We can't see that per grade level.
I don't see that per grade level.
So I read this and I say, well, jeez, at LMS, fifty-three percent of the kids are one grade level below or more in reading.
According to this data point, yes.
And we'll dig more into this in August.
And we'll dig more into this.
With the other data points that you have.
Correct, correct.
Cause it, also Andrew, if you look at the top chart, so a hundred and twenty-five percent of the kids. Uh, no, that's not correct. We had a hundred and twenty-five percent progress, right? So they, they caught up for some of the deficiencies. Then if you go down below, you can see that, I mean, seventh grade was a hundred and ninety. They almost doubled, right?
Yeah.
Um, but fifth grade was at fifty. So when you dig in deeper to it, you can start to parse out exactly what that means by grade and then identify
Yeah.
Uh, where the, the bigger gaps are and how to go after those.
Do they have two blocks of math in seventh this year, this current year? Okay, so they made that progress with only one period of math in seventh grade.
Well, they, two, I missed. It's two maths in sevens and.
Right, but they didn't have two blocks of it this year. They had smaller classes for the one block.
That's right.
Same thing with the ELA. They didn't have two blocks of ELA. They had a semester of info and a semester of lit.
Interesting, okay.
So there's a lot for us to dig into. I just, as always, like to make sure I have some data on there for you guys and these had just come out and, uh.
Thank you.
Right?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
All right.
Any other questions for Mary before I?
Phew, that was a long report.
Hey, Spanish.
Yeah.
I know.
We're not that far behind the agenda.
What's that?
We're not that far behind in the agenda.
We were caught up before Mary started. I just.
I was right on track.
Yes, we were. We were spot on. I'm teasing Mary.
All right, all right. Hey, I talk pretty fast too.
You did. That was a lot of information. Okay, that brings us to class sizes twenty-two and twenty-three.
So just, uh, we, we're trying to provide the links to help the board. Obviously we're looking at the class sizes that are at GMS and LMS. The administrative team um, is reviewing these. I talked with Dan today. I talked with Jen today. Um, looking at the May enrollment numbers, then we went back to the enrollment projections. Remember those were projections we had last year. If you look at the current year, the projections proved to be pretty darn accurate. Uh, I think we're off by six students between two schools. So otherwise we became pretty close. Individual classes, there were some pluses and minuses. Um, and then we just provided the board with the updated class size policy. I, you know, the last time we were just giving the enrollment updates and it went to a whole conversation about where we are with class sizes. And, um, I just wanted to bring it back today and see if there were other things that the board wanted us to keep our eye on as we continue trying to monitor where we're gonna land. It's, it's a, it's a tricky situation at this time of year because, um, you know, we know of some students who are coming in new, but not all. We know of some students who are moving out to other schools, but not all. And we're trying to do the best we can with the budget that we've been provided.
So fifth grade is still over. It looks like the numbers haven't changed.
Ninety-seven's the trigger number.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's.
But it's projected for one oh one, cause we usually gain three, I'm looking at, at prior years. So fourth grade in seventeen, eighteen became ninety the next school year. Eighty-nine became ninety-five, gained six. Ninety-two stayed the same. Seventy-four gained to seventy-seven. So if you're comparing trends over the last few years, we've picked up average, let's say, three kids, which is what the projections have. And again, I still, I don't understand. I, I, what was, I guess you spoke with the administrator about that fifth, fifth grade class. What was her thoughts?
How many fourth graders are there?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. So if you look at the enrollment projections, we had ninety-six, ninety-six fourth graders all the way until February and then we gained one to put us at ninety-seven. So that, that move in occurred in February.
We had four teachers.
Our projection was, to your point Heidi, the, we gained six students two years ago, zero students one year ago and nine students this past year rising up to the middle school, rising up to fifth grade. So that's an average of five. We added five to ninety-six together, projection one oh one, but we gained one. So we're actually at one oh two projection. But we don't have a hundred and two students enrolled yet. Um, we have ninety-seven. So we haven't seen, I, I specifically asked the question, are we aware of anybody who has called from a private school to say, I'm coming? And the answer is, we're not aware of anybody. We're at ninety-seven. The trigger is ninety-seven.
But the trigger for first grade is eighty-five.
Hang on, six, hang on one second. Just stick with, stick with fifth.
Think about the number. So we're down one in first grade and we're at the trigger in fifth grade.
Um, but at the trigger in fifth and, you know, the, the concern is we also haven't had any of the ninety-sevens say, I'm not rising up to the middle school. I'm gonna go to another, uh, educational setting for whatever reason. So we haven't heard, we haven't heard either way. It's the ninety-seven. Could we go to the emergency fund and recommend we need to, cause we don't have it in the budget, that we didn't budget for a fifth teacher at that grade. So could we use that class size reduction fund that we've set aside? Possibly. But if we pull that trigger now and somebody moves out, we may have gone too early on it. Uh, if we were to get a flood of calls this week that kids are coming from somewhere else, that's gonna help guide us to make the decision. But we're sort of in a limbo holding pattern at the moment because it's right at the trigger.
And then where do you put those kids next year with LMS?
Well, that's, that's another question, right? I mean, it is one more teacher and one more class to manage, but that's true. Now, if I may, just coming to the first grade number. So in the first grade case, in the policy, it talks about, you know, item number one is the makeup of the class. And, um, Dan has, has clearly said before that if you look at the profile of student needs in the first grade, there are some individual needs that make it so that the five classes will be important.
Some students might equal two. See, that makes a difference.
Well, there's, there are students who, um, and, you know, equal two. There are some students with space need considerations, et cetera. So, you know, so even in that case, you're one under currently. And again, if you look at the projections, the projections don't say that we'll be one over when more. Cause if somebody out there has not heard for school in the fall, you can do it now. It's okay. It'll help us to get better numbers by getting the registration completed.
Grade just, St. Francis, why?
Grade one, if I see not to exceed at twenty-one and we're talking about nineteen.
What Liz is saying is, um, classes, right? So.
St. Francis goes to traditionally a transition.
So eighty. And that, that's why the trigger number is eighty-five. So what that means, one plus twelve, twenty-two and it net, what the policy.
But I'm seeing.
I understand that some students might need some extra elbow room or stuff. That makes sense.
Yep.
I don't have an issue with the first grade. My, the concern I have is that hit the trigger number, we continue to be on the trigger number. Um, we've set policy that we do not want our classes to exceed a certain number for grades four and five, I believe. And we are exceeding that. We've been exceeding that since February. While I don't wanna pull the trigger too early, I likewise have concerns about pulling the trigger too late and not being able to find a teacher or space or planning for whether that impacts a move for grades, for example, up to the high school or not. And if we're in August saying, okay, well, we still got ninety-seven, so we need a fifth teacher by our policy. I think that's gonna cause a lot more confusion.
But technically some, I, my sons were in classes with more than that. It all depends on the UA schedule. Like my son was in gym once with six kids and then his other class had twenty-eight kids.
So fifth grade stays together. So the same group of fifth grade students, they, they try to keep it similar to, so my understanding is, at least my experience is, I have a current fifth grader, she stays with her same class through her UAs. Yeah.
I understand. But we don't have money in the budget for another person.
Well, adding, adding a, well, there's, there's two points. The money that's in the budget is the staffing levels that you see. You could transfer somebody from first to fifth. You're gonna trigger an issue with the student makeup in first, right? The, the profile of the student class. So I would not recommend, if you feel that the trigger number has been reached and will be maintained in fifth. a vote to authorize us to expend out of the emergency class size fund would allow us to proceed ahead to hire. We also can, I mean, it's mid-June at this point. So our next meeting is on July third, six, what is it, six? Oh, right, the twenty-ninth, but, um, but we can come in with tighter numbers by then and hopefully, um, you know, just try to make sure that our numbers are as accurate as they can be.
I think having some feedback too from, um, Jen and Martha on why they haven't requested another, another teacher would might be helpful.
I thought they did at one point. So that's where I'm also confused because there was a conversation about a fifth, fifth grade teacher based on the number of fourth graders there were early on. And I, again, I don't know where that conversation landed. I'll be honest, and I'm just going to put it on the table. I hope we're not making decisions about the fifth grade teachers being four or five based off of the construction project because we don't want to have to add another fifth classroom because I don't think that's right.
Let me answer that now. The construction project does not factor in any of the conversation.
I want to put that out there.
We will staff the rooms based upon the the student class size configurations that we need. So it says nothing to do with the construction project. If we have one more class, it's one more. Hit that hurdle. Not a problem. However, uh, I do think you're right. I think when Jen was sitting here presenting back in the fall and we were doing our budget development, we were watching that number carefully. If you remember, Dan last year actually wanted to put the resource into the fourth grade and not the third.
Yeah, right.
And we, we said, no, you need to hire into the third grade. So, um, you know, so we've been watching these numbers pretty carefully. It is the one anomaly class. It's that, it's that bump that that we're kind of wrestling with through, uh, through here. So, um,
I don't want to open a can of worms, uh, but I feel like I might. I do not want to engage in a debate on this tonight. I don't. But my thought process is, do we have the policy right? Right? I know the previous boards have talked about this and established this, but my question coming into this is, geez, I think we need to look at the policy again. I'll leave it at that.
I'm always happy to look at the policy again because I was outnumbered last time. So if we want to bring it up, I wanted smaller trigger numbers than we're here, but.
So much smaller. I think we have small class numbers. You talk to teachers in other districts and they have a lot more kids in classes.
I I agree with the class size numbers. I disagree about when you have what the trigger number is. Because in my view, you get a single class that hits the trigger number, that's the trigger number. And the way that the policy we wrote and that you guys voted for, I didn't vote for, it's if all four classes hit the.
Were you here the year?
I'm with you. That's what I see.
Third grade teachers because of the, we hired, there were thirteen third grade teachers. There were thirteen students in a third grade class at one point.
Oh.
That's what pushed me over the edge.
So Andrew, can I just ask, what, what about the policy do you think needs to be revisited?
I don't know yet.
Oh, okay.
And again, I'm doing, we're having these debates now for the last couple of meetings, and I'm like, geez.
We have this every year. I agree. The policy is problematic. We can't seem to all agree on what it should be.
Well, and I think to Tara's point, we sat here and we said during the meeting, we're going to look at the other factors because we've always just looked at the number, but there are other factors there. And so that.
We just heard, you know, one child might need space requirements.
Exactly, exactly.
But I also want to get a new G M S. I.
So you think the addition of a fifth, fifth grade teacher might jeopardize that?
Completely separate.
No, I think people want to see us tighten our belts.
Well, of course.
But I think the educate, our mission and our goal as a board is to provide an adequate and excellent education for these kids.
Correct. I'm not even going to go there right now.
Anyway, I didn't want to open a can of worms, but I did. I recognize that in advance.
Yeah. No, I I don't, I don't disagree.
So how about this? Can we table this again, one more time, and bring this up either at June twenty-ninth or our July sixth meeting? I don't care which, but at that point, have hard number, harder numbers than what we have. And again.
When did you say?
I think the, I think the conversation about class size should be on June twenty-ninth.
Yes.
I think we need to give direction.
Right, yeah.
It has to be that.
But I, I think we should keep having the conversation every meeting until we feel confident.
Be consistent, just adding another.
I will point out.
Said trigger number, we're there.
We were consistent with the trigger number for everything, and that falls, we're there.
But we were also wrong when we overruled Dan Mitchell last year. He wanted to put the the teacher in fourth, and we put it in third.
Yeah, for one kid.
No, what happened was they needed it in fourth. They didn't need it in third.
And and the other thing is, the board, which approved this policy on, let's see.
December.
Last year.
What was it?
Yep, December.
Okay, December fifteenth. But read number five, class size benchmarks are before school starts in early August. Because we consciously said, we don't want to pull the trigger too early. You have to wait. And, you know, what we don't want to be doing is a few years ago, hiring a teacher on the morning of opening day. That was too late. Right? But we just don't know right now. Will somebody move out? Will somebody transfer to another school? It it is fluid. We did say early August. So should we talk about it in June? Yes. Should we talk about it in July? Yep. But the board has to also realize that early August was the time period that we picked.
I just don't know if it gives you enough time to hire in the event that you need it.
We've talked about, you know, I've heard the term bomb of the barrel multiple times sitting on this board, and I don't want to be trying to find whatever teacher we can find to shove into a position.
Early August was earlier than what, when we made decisions. It was like two weeks before the school year.
I think we should talk to Jen, see what Jen says. I mean, she has information of, she and Dan have information about this incoming class that we don't.
I actually thought we would have information from her for today's meeting.
Yeah.
What, what information do you feel you don't have?
I don't know, like the, the information that Dan Mitchell.
The teacher.
If you ask any principal, do you want another teacher? What do you think the answer is?
But she has a request.
Well, Heidi referenced it.
She did put in the request, though.
She was talking about it months ago, but we haven't heard anything since.
Right.
That was, that's really the question.
But what if we hire an anticipated teacher and then you don't need that teacher and you've, and you've stood in front of, you've, you've actually, um, I can't, I can't even think the word I'm looking for. You've, you've stopped that teacher from taking a job. They wouldn't have had.
Yeah, right.
That's, that's a, that's a decision you have to consider.
This is why we have this discussion every spring and summer. It's, it's, it's just the nature of the beast. This is what it is.
It is, but I feel like the past conversations have been us having the conversation about where the trigger number is.
Ninety-seven.
And we're, we're over it. There's no dispute whatsoever from anyone.
I still want to hear.
We're over it. I still want to hear from Jen and Martha.
Ninety-seven.
All four classes are over, are past the twenty-one.
Why do you so, why do you always want one in the elementary school, Tina? And you don't want one in the middle school? If this was the element, no, if this was the elementary school, you would have said.
I never said I don't think we should hire a teacher. I said we should talk to the administrator. I thought, I, I, all I said was, I want to hear from Jen and Martha.
I think that's fair.
Who are the admins of the, of the school.
I do too. I think.
But we're still.
We said that last meeting, I guess, is my point. We wanted to hear from Jen, yeah, and so.
Did we tell her?
I understand it's an ongoing conversation. And again, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I feel like if we were on the other side of this number being ninety-five and someone was asking to hire a teacher, it would be a no. And that has been our prior conversations. And we're actually on the other side of the number this time, and it seems like I'm asking you to hire a teacher and I'm being told no. So.
That's what I feel like you're being told to.
I, I'm not saying no at all. All I'm saying is, I want to talk to the administrator and find out what the situation is from her perspective.
Yeah, so.
But does it matter because we have a policy?
It does matter because, because the administrator can give us information on the makeup of that class.
But we're at the trigger number. It doesn't matter.
Well, I think the policy also says, to your point, Superintendent J, that, that benchmarks before school starts in early August. So I think if we're following the policy, we should follow that point.
Well, what if the number in first grade goes down to eighty-two?
We'll know when August.
We'll know when August.
And.
I'm sorry, music first grade, but that's just the number that's.
That's kind of what the final decisions are made.
We're, we're talking around the trigger number as a black and white number, but the gray is items one through five. The classes. Because you could be under the trigger number with the right profile of a class that says, we need another teacher.
But have we ever done that?
We came forward to say, we need to make a case here.
When do we last?
What, what?
Since I've been on the board, we haven't done it under.
If we came forward to say, given the profile and the makeup, this is what we're recommending and here's why.
But you've never done that before.
I have always advocated for that, for go by the recommendation.
Now.
No, of course. That's why I'm asking for input from Jen. I'm, I'm advocating that we listen, we consider all the factors, which is the same thing I've always advocated for. That's all I'm saying.
I like it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So will we back in, the June meeting, if I may, I don't want June twenty-ninth to turn into another full board.
No, we have June sixteen. Isn't that?
Two, two topics really.
Oh, my God. Is it the end of the year? Oh, my God.
But July sixth, July sixth, I will, will have more specifics. How's that? All right. Thank you.
All right. Yeah.
That pretty much sums up this end of the school year.
Media reports.
None for me. Oh, we have one coming up, though, Michelle.
I'm sorry.
We have one coming up on Monday.
First, yes.
June twenty-second. All right, don't even, just call me. And what is that? It's like virtual, it's actually virtual. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's going to be bit remote, remote.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to assume that Mary.
Monday's the twenty.
That's why, is, didn't we say it for Monday? It's next week. Yeah. There we go.
So Mary covered perk and grading and reporting. We'll start time task force. Just going to check them off. Wellness committee.
Wellness. So we had, I'm trying to count them. We had five or six meetings this year, and we just had our last one in the end of last week, I guess. Um, but there was only three of us there. Um, still a good, it was still actually a good meeting because we now have an in, we have a senior, incoming senior, doing her senior project on the wellness committee.
Nice.
And it's Emma, one of our school board reps. Yes.
Great.
And so she was there with me and, um, Jada, um, and we went over her requirements, what she needed from us, what we, what some of the things were that we thought she could do. Um, we are going to have to fill out as a committee, or Lauren is going to have to fill out, um, a, a well, a formal wellness policy assessment this coming year. We're not sure if it's the beginning of the year or when exactly it's due. This is a triennial report that we need to fill out. Um, we're trying to get the previous one from three years ago. Um, these should be made public. So the plan is to put them on the wellness page on the website. Um, so we did a kind of a run-through of that, the three of us trying to fill it out, and then Lauren will fill the rest in. But, um, you know, one thing I think that people should know is that we never hold back recess for punitive reasons. I think that's really important. That's one of the questions on there. Um, and then also that physical activity can be used as a reward, and I know that that's being used a lot. Absolutely, because it's, it really should be joyful. Um, a big add from the, the assessment that we could fill in is that we now serve breakfast. That wasn't in place three years ago. Um, and, um, yeah, just always interesting going through that. One thing for you, Heidi, is that, and I have to get the form, but there's a start time recommendation on there. I think it's at eight thirty, that, that they're recommending high schools start.
Yeah, earlier than eight thirty.
I think it was.
Two, three thirty.
Um, so there, so we can't say that. So we have to check a no on that box. Um.
Interesting.
So that's just something to consider. Um, something else on there, I think, I mean, obviously, we do fabulous with, with the competitive sports. We offer those. Um, but they ask if you offer non-competitive sports, and the only ones we could think of were. Not a sport.
No, no, it's non-competitive. You mean, non-competitive?
Non-competitive.
Like an intramural, like, just for fun.
Right. So the only ones we could think of were, were like girls on the run. And then I just thought of weightlifting today. That's, you know, it's, anybody can do that. Um, but.
I want to go in there.
I mean, there's, I'd like to see more non-competitive sports, you know, the intramurals, but so many kids in our district compete in sports, which is fabulous. But, you know, to offer another alternative for people, just something to think about. So that was a good exercise to go through.
Tara, can I ask you, have you ever offered anything like yoga, like, or sports, like, to the staff and the students? Like, I know at one point they had a, a teacher who taught yoga. I think it was Kristin Adamekas, did yoga for everybody and stuff like that. And I know the staff would participate in probably some of the high school.
Yeah, so that is a fabulous idea. Um, I know that.
Jade is a yoga instructor.
Yeah, she is. I didn't know that. Um, a couple of years ago, when we met once for the wellness committee, oh, that's the other thing. Like, in my five years here, previous to this year, there was only wellness, one wellness committee meeting ever. So for us to meet five times in one year is a big, big improvement, even though we need to work on who's coming and try to get more community members and students to participate and.
Getting Heidi jokes.
Yeah, so we were going during that one meeting, one meeting we had like three years ago. Um, Holly had mentioned having like a health, um, I don't know, which she was.
Challenge.
A health fair.
Because they do it through Cigna.
Fair.
You can do it.
That's something different. But she was suggesting having a health fair at the beginning of the year for staff, which would kind of like have vendors come in and maybe offer some of those classes, um, that kind of thing. Thank you.
I, if I can just jump in, my last district did that and did a wonderful job with it, and I'm happy to connect you guys with the person that organizes their health.
So that's why we need Emma, because she'll be a doer. And we've asked her to put some thoughts on paper about like what, what you think is like, you know, what, what are your ideas? You know, because it's, I mean, her senior project is about what she wants to learn. So, um, so we've given her some ideas and, you know, that's just one of them. So. Andrew, did you have any, I'm sorry, you. I have, I also had emergency management. Um, they relisted the S R O position. I don't remember why, but there was something about the job description. I think they enhanced it somehow. Um.
Yes.
Yeah. And then, I'm not sure if I could say the other update, but, so I'll just not say anything. But things are moving along. There's a lot that's discussed, but some of it we can't talk about. So. Um, Andrew, did you have budget and or?
Next week.
Okay.
Uh, so no new updates there.
Yeah.
Um, there was an outstanding budget committee request about comparison of salaries from both town and school.
Yeah.
Um, I think I, I did receive another inquiry from Chairman Sun today, asking what the school board's position on that request is. Uh, so I'd be looking for direction from the board and how you'd like to answer that. Um.
What did they want to, did they just, they want a listing of the salaries?
We did. At our last meeting, right, there was a comparison done of insurance between town and school, right, which was asked and shared with the budget committee. Um, and that was well received in the, and there was a response to that. Can we do a similar comparison between salaries? Be a at school, be a at town, whatever it might be.
Positions.
Like position comparison.
Andrew, is that a budget committee request, or is that a member of the budget committee requesting?
Both.
So the budget committee voted?
Not a vote. The budget committee discussed it and then asked a question.
Because I, I, I'm just reluctant to.
Excuse me. No, I, I, I am mistaken. That came in through an email to the chairman, which was then forwarded to myself.
Yeah.
So it was from a budget committee. What, what I'm reluctant to do is to spend time compiling reports that we don't have.
My two cents, and I, I did share this with the chairman, that having been on the budget committee for a number of years, the budget committee has all the information.
Yes.
They have the town information, they have the school information. I've made it available to them in spreadsheets very easily to decipher. And if it's a request from the budget committee, they have the information at their fingertips.
I agree with that a hundred percent. I think.
I don't really think there's one-to-one relationships.
Well, that's the other side. That's the other side of it, but that's not, yeah.
So we're going to compare Mr. Brown's position to Dr. Judd's position?
Right. Yeah, it's all very.
Uh, Mr. Brown's position would be more in line with me.
Well, that's the thing, it, you know, doesn't line up.
Right.
I don't know. They like.
Right. It's just they're apples to oranges, in my opinion, and they already have that.
Don't let me into that.
It's all outlined in the budget.
So I will present that position to the budget committee next week.
I mean, do you agree with that?
I do. I do.
I think the, the healthcare comparison, the cost of a family health plan.
Right.
Is comparing apples to apples. Uh, I think there's all there's, there's so many ways to skin this cat that, um, I just, I wouldn't even know how to tackle it, and I don't know how to begin the work on it. And, and I think Andrew makes a really good point. The data is all there. If somebody wants to compile a report, have at it. The, the data exists. But then, once you reach a conclusion from it, there'll be a lot of yeah-budding that will come out of it too, versus. Versus a family plan for the town costs this and a family plan for the school costs that. That, that's relatively straightforward.
Targeting individuals in that analysis.
Right.
You know, for, for use, for someone to pinpoint, well, this person makes this much and this person makes this much. I don't know that that's a fair comparison either without.
But even insurance, like 93.7 compared to 80.20, when you see the dollar amounts, they're.
Right.
It's, it's misleading in all different ways.
Yep, and, you know, as a final note, we have a lot going on right now, as it is, with two major projects and a transition with our BA.
I don't know what date it is.
Yeah, and Liz has no idea what day it is. So, yeah, thank you for, I think we're all in consensus on that one, Andrew. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yep, um, the other committee that I did have a meeting with is the capital improvement committee. We did meet, um, on June 6th. Looking back, that seems like forever ago. The, the capital improvement committee reviewed a presentation from the highway department and starting to look at their needs over the next six years. And the committee kind of agreed to a more frequent meeting cycle in preparation for a recommendation to the board of what the revised six-year plan is somewhere in the September, October timeline. We'll see when those meetings are scheduled. I mentioned that to the board because the school's an instrumental part of the presentation process. And I would anticipate that being July, August. However, we also received word that town administrator Brown is leaving. And I don't know the impact of that to the capital improvement committee.
Andrew, is it, your understanding is that the capital planning committee meets on the first Monday?
That's been the cycle.
But not every month, sort of like quarterly.
The, the vision out of the original plan, once it was adopted in 2020, was that the capital improvement committee would meet quarterly, right, to refresh the plan and keep it updated. COVID hit, that didn't happen, rest is history. However, there's been a, 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 a renewal, if you will, of the plan and saying, all right, now that the plan is already dated two years, let's keep it fresh and let's renew it for another six years going forward. So the plan was through six years. Now we're taking the four years that were, were still left in the plan and adding an additional two to it for, for a new six-year view.
You should be able to do.
The meeting frequency of that is to, again, meet with all the new department heads, once again, understand what their six-year plan is. Did it change from the original plan? Et cetera.
So I ask that because Michelle and I are engaged in a process. We're, we're thinking ahead to the new website. And what we're envisioning is a table that sort of lays out when all these meetings are. And I wanna capture it on a table, so I wanna put on the first Monday of the month, the capital planning, cuz that is something we are dedicated participating in. And then you ought to be able to just click on the link of that. And in capital planning's case, it should take you to whatever the town has for a website. That's where you'll get your information. But, you know, wellness committee, to Tara's point, we've increased the frequency, but we wanna dedicate to it. And so we ought to be able to say that, you know, that meeting is on the whatever it ends up being. And there it is on a grid and you click on it and it, you know, very clearly outlines for anybody in the public, you can go and see what the committee's about, when they meet, where the minutes are, what the agendas have been, et cetera, as much as that can be disclosed. So I'm trying to capture and build all that now so that when we roll the website out in the fall, no longer will it be, hey, you haven't updated the perk minutes in excellent, no, you click the link to perk and there it is. It, it'll be structured so that using Google Docs and hyperlinks that we can really, um, build this right out, so.
I guess just to finish that thought with the capital improvement committee, hold the thought. I don't know what the meeting frequency schedule is going to be. I know that there was a talk about increasing the frequency over the next several months.
But I think it has been on the first Monday. I think that's generally when.
First Monday, yes, the first Monday of the month over the past couple of months.
That was the target.
All right, yeah, so I'm gonna put it on there as the target and then, you know, the committee obviously can change it, but, um, anyway. And, uh, when was wellness?
June, yeah, June, hold on a second. Yeah, June 7th.
So first?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Although Lauren and I talked about having four meetings next year and starting in October. I think it was like the, I'll get you the pattern. I can't, can't remember what we talked about.
You know, if it's first Tuesday and, and we can put sometimes quarterly, you know, so.
Definitely talked about a, a, a pattern of it.
Thank you.
All right, um, what else do we have? Facilities?
So I had a question about that. I mean, with the meetings now being available online, I don't know what type of updates the board wants related to facilities. I mean, I often feel like facilities updates are typically in the year report anyways, there's not usually a lot to add. But I just kinda wanted to, food for thought, it doesn't have to be this time, but we're regularly meeting, we're following the regular meeting schedule.
And plugging right along, but.
Right.
At this point in the process, it's not a huge amount to update.
I think the public can get the updates through the, um, the first updates came out today with the LMS and GMS, um, project updates. And so between that and then I think the board gets those updates too and then, um, being able to watch the actual meeting, if something catches your eye on those reports, I don't know what else we would need to report, so.
I'm gonna go with less is more, um, like that policy approach.
Do, are there any questions from the board about anything that's happening in facilities?
I don't know. I mean, I would just say, like, I wouldn't wanna miss any opportunity to talk about the status of stuff. I mean, even if it's just like two or three bullets, like here's what we talked about, like the last, that facilities, I'm, it's so nice to have these recorded because we're able to hear from, what's it, Kyle, is that his name? Kyle about, about the architect fees. Those, those were really important questions and so to be able to say that in this meeting, that, you know, if you wanna know, if you have questions about, about how much the architect fees are and what they encompass, it's, it was all in the last meeting. It was a really good, really good discussion.
And the structure, which I think people don't understand. There's not a check for $2 million being cut right now.
Yes.
You know, I don't know that people understand that.
And it's not just Kyle making pretty drawings. It, there's a whole team behind him.
Yes, he explained it really, yeah. I guess I find it hard sometimes because I sit through so many meetings and I just assume everybody else is sitting through them with me and then,
okay, well, what information do I need to relay sometimes? I'm sure you have that problem because you sit through, kind of repetitive sometimes, but.
Well, I, I'll often start telling somebody something and I'm like, have I already told you this? Cuz it's like we sit in so many meetings, it is hard.
Um, I'm on the website committee and we received an email, um, with the, a lovely list of other websites for different other schools and, um, we were asked to just kind of look at what kinds of things we want to include, what kinds of, um, points we wanna hit. A really helpful one was mobile, um, mobile access and making it easily accessible on, on the, on a, on a mobile device. So I started looking at some of those and I don't think we have a meeting time set up just yet. We were asking for feedback.
Still waiting for a couple of people's availability and then hopefully we'll be able to nail it down.
I love the calendar on the middle school page on the bottom. Easy to pick out what's going on, what night, day.
I think that's it.
I got an email from the website committee. Am I on that committee?
You're the alternate.
You're my alternate. Okay, good. Okay, good. I was like, is this cuz of wellness and I know we need a new page or what? Thank you. All right.
So please provide.
I probably did.
I don't remember. Feel free to provide feedback and evaluate those websites, especially the mobile experience, cuz that's what we're looking for.
Huge website. All right. I think that's it for committee reports. So new business, hour behind now, guys. New business, we have policies review for first reading. I guess first I'll ask, I mean, some of these are involved in the discussion about board communication. So why don't we, what if we approve the ones that aren't involved in that discussion and then as we have that discussion, we can make adjustments?
Did you have any questions about them though?
Oh, I did.
Because these are only for first reading and we did put them out to administration for, um, to look at them and provide feedback on changes or whatever. It didn't receive anything. I will mention that we did get guidance from, or I should say, I got guidance from NHSBA that the complaint policy we had, which was fine. It was, it legislature had changed a couple of things, which is why now you have different ones for each category.
I see.
Okay.
So Andrew, on the first one, you had a comment, um, asking if we receive period, uh, uh, we receive reports of all staff issues.
Yep.
Typically don't. Did you wanna?
What do you mean?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, staff concerns and complaints, right? I think from my, from my position, it would be helpful to understand what are those concerns and complaints being loved, just in a summary file, right? And they can be, um, genericized in a summary, right? This complaint was about this topic, this complaint was about this topic. So at least we have a barometer of what the staff concerns and complaints are. At this point, I don't believe I have a view into any concerns or complaints.
But isn't the union's job to bring them forward to us and then we address them?
No, to bring it forward to management.
Yeah, I'm not looking for like the full-on grievances to maintain independence. I, I completely appreciate and get that. I just think it would be helpful to understand what are the main topics of concerns and complaints that are being submitted.
Sort of a pulse check is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, so that's gonna be a challenge and, and let me just talk a little bit about it. You know, our belief is to solve problems at the lowest level possible. So every time somebody, I'm here to complain because the copier's broken today. We're not logging. We had a complaint about a broken copier. We fixed the copier. So there's a whole boatload of things that just occur on a daily basis and are resolved very peacefully and just, you know, taken care of because it's the nature of.
I go to my union rep and say, this is my complaint and take it how you will and.
And if you read this definition, it says a concern or complaint is defined as an alleged material violation of board policies or administrative procedures that apply to all employers, employees, sorry. You know, and so if, if you have that level of concern that's being generated, I mean, I, we would be addressing it. It would either be a grievance because it's been a violation or it would be, uh, a thorough complaint that we look into. And I have kept the board informed of those events. They're rare. They, we don't have stuff that bubbles up to that level of definition of reporting.
Cuz we don't wanna know about it in case we have to give a thing in.
And I appreciate that and I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Right, and I'm not saying don't resolve it by any means. I'm just saying, what was, what was the list, right? Do we have like 10, 10 complaints or 10 concerns on this topic, 10 concerns on, whatever it might be.
Yeah, so I, I, again, i- it's what, what do we view as a complaint? If we follow that definition, then the board has been kept up to date. Because, you know, when was the last time we had an allegation that there was a violation of board policy? I can't even tell you one. And if, if we had, we would, we would resolve that. Because nobody comes to work in the morning and says, how many board policies can I violate today? You know, we, we're all doing the best we can and occasionally, you know, something may occur and when it gets pointed out, we get it resolved.
No, that doesn't really answer your question.
It doesn't. I mean, I understand, I understand exactly what's being said. I just.
I also, the only other point I would make is that during non-public, there is a section on staff concerns where, generally speaking, we are brought up to date about any, anything significant that should be on our radar screen. Again, it's not every meeting because there isn't something every meeting, but I do feel like we are given a pulse check during that part.
The material, sure, material, right? It's everything else that doesn't percolate up to us.
Yeah.
That we have no view of.
Right, I, I guess what I'm saying is a lot of those don't percolate up to us. They don't turn into grievances that are heard by the board. They're resolved on a managerial level.
And agree they should be.
As they should be.
As they should be. I think we all agree to that.
And many of them, I'm not aware of. You know, I mean, in theory, if a parent has a concern about instructional material, they should be addressing it with the teacher. If it gets resolved at the teacher level, the principal may not know about it. I may not know about it. How do we log that and report on it if the point is the system works, it got resolved?
I think it still should be logged as for tracking. I think there should be some, some type of record, whether it be a spreadsheet, whatever it might be, of what that concern was.
I wouldn't want my complaints written down anywhere.
In checkbook.
I just think it's on TV. It can be genericized, right? I'm not looking for the, the person, I'm not looking for the date. I'm just looking for, here's the topic of concern.
I, I look at the, you take a look at the special ed process. It's fraught with dispute. It's fraught with, you know, did the teacher meet the IEP? Did the family do their piece of this? I mean, so, you know, I, I don't even know how to begin logging that. What I know is that when the concern doesn't get resolved at the lowest level and it bubbles and more people get involved, we, we work, I mean, we've gone from having lawsuits in this district, frequent lawsuits in this district to not having that any longer. And so why? Because we solve problems and we get things resolved. And so I, I just don't know where to begin logging it. To what level do we log it, I guess?
I just don't see it as part of our purview, you know, as if our, if our purview is maintaining policies and, you know, kind of overs, making sure the superintendent followed, executes those policies. I just, I, I mean, definitely, I, I understand the need to, the want to hear what's going on and, and to have a pulse and, and hear the complaints, but.
But do you meet with the union president?
Every month.
And do you talk about these things?
Yeah, I'm Patrick, actually I meet with both Patrick, Kathy and Darlene. The first Thursday of the month is the LEA, the second Thursday of the month is LSSA. And it's what, what, are there any concerns? Are there any issues that we need to talk about and make sure that we get resolved? So that's, that's part of solving the problem at the lowest level possible.
That's part of it too.
And I'll be honest, my attorney brain's still in, we don't talk much, but that's just me. You know, when you get into, there's problems here, there, you know, then you have to produce a paper trail of things and I just, I, I don't know that we need to be involved to that level, I guess, to create a new spreadsheet to, to have that added in.
And to, to add that task to the.
I certainly want to be apprised if there's something that we should be apprised about, if there's the potential of a lawsuit.
Right, if you had 20 issues of really the same theme, right, that are all resolved, we wouldn't know about that at all.
Because it was fixed.
Because it was fixed, but you still had 20 cases or 20 concerns that were all materially the same thing.
Yeah, but I want to empower employees and I think if they are getting multiple concerns brought to them at the same time, I would hope that they would go to the building principal or something. Like whoever can affect that change, that's, that's what I would like to see.
I'm outnumbered on this one, that's fine. I just, it's an observation that from my seat.
Well, and, and if it helps, uh, we do that. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at Mary, I'm looking at the director team. You know, if we have a similar thing that comes up, we're gonna say, have we done the right PD? Is there a, uh, is there a clarity that's necessary in the expectation?
What are the structures that we've put in place? Do they need to be clarified? Are they, you know, where's the misunderstanding coming up?
But all of that is a management thing to identify and, um, to, to come up with, okay, what's the right response? So there's the instant response, you know, respond to this instant, if you would. And then there's the overall, hey, it seems as if, you know, issues with power schools keep popping up. We talk about those all the time. We talked about them today with Andrea. You know, and just trying to tweak and adjust the system to make sure that we're as efficient as we can be.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve, um, policy GB.
Well, these are just first readings.
Proving it as a first reading.
We have to approve it as a first, first reading.
Or not approve it.
Or not approve it. So I'll make a motion to approve GBK, staff concerns and complaints.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? 40, 410. All right, policy ILBA, assessment of educational programs. You have any questions or comments on this one?
There are minor changes in this according to the NHSBA updates and technical advisors.
So can I just ask a favor, Michelle, and I don't know of anybody else? You've typically highlighted in yellow, um, the things that are.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, but it's just easier for my eye to go to that.
You know what? You are absolutely right and I, I will own that.
I did compare them and contrast them, so I'm okay.
I'll own that one, my. I'll own that one, my head hasn't been in the game the last couple of weeks.
No, 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 I just, if we could have those changes highlighted.
Absolutely.
It focuses my attention more on what need, what's changing.
When it goes to second reading, I'll highlight it anyway, so you remember what the highlight, the change was.
I think they are in italics, but it's harder to pick them out that way.
Yeah, I know, but sometimes you can't, those italics kind of run together, I know.
Right.
I wish there was a better way, I would like to come up with a better way to do it.
I appreciate it.
I like the yellow.
Again, if we can.
Yeah, the yellow.
The yellow grabs my attention.
Definitely. So I did have a comment, um, and it's a consistency thing. A, ILBA and ILBAA both define competency and both define mastery, but the definitions are different. So I would just would like to see them consistent.
Interesting.
We'll align that.
That was a good catch.
Yeah.
I wasn't really looking at it.
I don't know which of it it should be, but, okay.
Thank you for that, but yeah, Vishal, any other?
Just, just responding to the comments. So the designee is the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, so it is Mary. And Mary comes, uh, every other month with board updates, so that when it says regular, it's the bi-monthly, which is not twice a month, it's every other month, uh, reporting that she would give on.
And the assessment data is annually in the, usually in the August.
And that's the August meeting because we need to wait for the AP testing results to come in and other late spring tests.
So can we define, or do you want to keep it generic? And report to the board annually in August?
I, I think leaving it, I mean, I, I'm okay with it being open. It tends to be a summer report, although we did give a mid-year update this year too, so.
Which I appreciated actually, to semi-annual.
I don't want to require it though.
Yeah, true.
I think annually is fine because again, I mean, we just don't know what, if we say in August and for whatever reason, Mary takes a vacation, or we only do one meeting in August instead of one in July, we might be boxing ourselves into an update that we're not ready for.
Makes sense.
As long as it's being done though, I think it's annually and I think we're tracking that, so.
So we're still on ILBA, right?
Yeah. Were there any other questions on ILBAA?
I had one thing, um. Where was it? I'd like to have the change, okay, explain change from ELO to credit. To me, that seems like a broader definition, that was my point. So I just have to go back to that. So this is the second to last set paragraph on the first page. And so my question is, I mean, are we talking about, so why is it changing from a? It seemed like that paragraph was in relation to the paragraph above it, but now it just talks about credit. It says, credit may be used to fulfill prerequisites for other courses and/or subject area credit requirements for graduation. I don't really understand what that means. I, I understood it when it said extended learning opportunity may be used to fulfill prerequisites.
Can I just jump in at this point? I just leaned over to Michelle and, and said, I have some concerns with the two. I didn't get the notification that these were going forward.
Oh, okay.
So this one in particular, I have, I, I want to do some comparison to the, because I, the wording and a couple of different things, I think, are, the way we have it, it's not as clear as in the other, in the, the model policy. So that being one of them, that was, that was part of my confusion as well.
All right.
Right, and that came right from the model policy. Yep.
But I think we have a really strong ELO in, um, policy that we just revised two years ago that I, I want to make sure we're referencing appropriately in this, so.
So I'll move to table ILBA and ILBAA.
Okay.
No, just table them please. All right, and then KA, KBB, KE and KEB.
I just have something or a couple of things on KA.
Okay.
Um, just go out of here. Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so the bullets, they're just hanging there. I don't think there's anything to describe what those are for. And it doesn't refer to the paragraph above it that talks about school-sponsored parent workshops. So I think the bullets need to have a line that says something like.
The school board shall, or.
The goals of a strong partnership between the school system and parents slash community members are to. And then it's develop public, public understanding of all of the aspects of school operation, secure adequate financial support. To me, these are goals. Um, so I think that's how that could be resolved. And then the other thing is, okay, what, why, why does it say ju, why is it just faith, faith-based organizations? I feel like it should be all. So that is the par, had last paragraph, it's the first page. The support of area businesses, agencies and faith-based organizations shall be sought through financial.
Can we just say organizations?
That's exactly what I'm saying, yeah. Just organizations. Um, and then.
Although it does say, oh, I don't know what the difference is between the support, but partnerships shall be developed with local organizations in the next one.
And then how are we defining this?
Duplicative. I think it's a broad definition, I don't think it needs to be defined.
Local organizations are, yeah, organizations like, um, PTO, friends of.
Nonprofit organizations.
Nonprofit organizations.
So I would view that as the veterans and others.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would, I like talented individuals.
That's awesome. So, and then, um, business partnerships, maybe we don't need to do this, but, um, to me, it's, I mean, the business partnerships, even, even through extended learning opportunities, really allow skill building in addition to whatever else we said here. Good, it, it, business partnership shall also be developed to assist students in the successful transition to employment or further education. It's more than that, it's building skills too. So that's my add there.
I think that's also included in the ELO policy.
Michelle, do you get something and you just put it in our pol, is this? So the NHSBA updates policies that you either have to have mandated policies or recommended policies. We don't often do the optional ones unless the board has called for that. So when they send an update, I compare it with what we have and whatever has been updated gets worked into the policy.
Oh, all right, got it.
So I just did the comparison, you know, we talked about the faith-based, that's in the, the model policy. So I'm like, okay, is that Litchfield language or is that New Hampshire language? It's actually, that came directly from them, so. Now, could we change it? Sure, we could.
Right.
Because we're adopting local policy, but I was like, where did that first originate?
That's where it came from, yep.
I, I will say that, um, part of it is you have to trace policy back sometimes generations where, you know, religious organizations, because of the whole separation of church and state, they were really not included. And then as federal law changed and adapted to say, no, you have to provide access to faith-based organizations and, and clubs and activities and so on. So I immediately, when I read that language in the model policy, I think it's because in the past, we would go to the Lions Club. But we would not go to the, uh, local church. And I think they were trying to say, no, it's, it's okay to foster these relationships. Separation of church and state does not say you can't foster these relationships and partners. So I think, I think they went out of their way to be really clear.
So by removing that, I mean, I know the intent is to be more inclusive and include all organizations, but are we actually not? Are we going back to not including the faith-based organizations? Is it just semantics?
I, I mean, I.
Could we just do organizations, parentheses, including faith-based, close parentheses?
Yeah.
Does that?
That might be a way to stay true to the model policy, stay true to the shift in intent.
Because if we list organizations out, then we exclude somebody and that's an issue.
Little listen all up, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Right. Did you get that, Michelle?
I just got that. Well, that, when you were talking about the business partnerships, what paragraph is that in? Because I just can't get my eyes on it.
Um, I think it was the last paragraph, first page. Actually, last sentence of the first page. Oh, sorry, no, it's not, hold it.
I have it on the.
Businesses.
I have it on the top of the last page.
Oh, I see it, I'm sorry, thank you. It's a, did you want something added to that?
Skill building.
Further education.
It's not just the transition to employment.
Further education and skill building, is that? Does that take care of it?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Or something to that effect, okay. Okay. Yep, that's, that's good.
So Liz, you asked a question about how often the, um, school-sponsored parent workshops?
Yeah, that was my little, because I remember before COVID, we did a few things on vaping and bullying and this and that.
Suicide prevention.
Yeah, we did, but I didn't know.
During COVID, there were online social emotional sessions.
I think, you know, one of my goals is to bring those back and start doing those again, whether it's, um.
Could have one on power school one.
Right, and competency-based grading and, you know, all of those kind of parenting questions that are out there.
That would actually be awesome.
I don't know that we need to outline, I mean, my goal would be something monthly, but I know that's a lot of work for a lot of people to, for me to say that. But each school could do their, you know, whatever is pressing.
We also have the quarterly, um, town forum that we have scheduled already, so maybe we put one of those on the curriculum or competency-based as one of the discussions, invite the public to come in. We have those couple of dates there, we might be able to. Yeah, one of the topics to that, because I think.
And I like the word workshops, it's not just to sit and get information. I mean, we have some, some, we've done some of those community workshops with the GMS project, but I think, you know, branching out and offer, having more offerings is, is a goal.
We could even ask parents what they'd like to see or what. Yeah.
Wellness committee may be able to play a role in that too.
So are we ready for, I'll make a motion to approve KA, policy KA as a first read?
With edits?
As revised.
As revised, yeah, sorry. Hold on a second.
Hold on a second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, abstain, KA is, I think, KBB, Title I, Family and Community Engagement.
This has really been a big change.
We are accepting Title I funds now. We weren't before.
No, we have.
We always have.
Middle school didn't get title.
Elementary school is the only one that.
Are we getting it at middle school now?
Elementary school is the only one that accepts Title I.
Okay, that's a good answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was a really big change to this policy and it came through, um, kind of like a, a emphasis on it from the NHSBA, that this was something that had to be done. You know, had to be rewritten or whatever, as quickly as possible. So we, not that it has to be approved as quickly as possible, but we needed to redo it, so. I just, it's just for consideration, it's, you don't even have to vote on it.
Oh, so this is a new policy, we did not have this.
It is, no, we had this policy, but it has radically changed.
Okay, so the one annual meeting, we have that in our policy previously, or is that?
That's actually in the law.
That's in the law.
Okay, that's what I thought, because we had to do that at my school too. Okay.
Because the o, the other one used to say.
Frequency, that may, is it vary or?
It's usually held at the beginning of the school year.
I was just going to say.
Usually we've, we've started to identify those students by mid-September to early October and that's when the meeting is held. It was not held, I, I'm looking at your note, what was the policy during COVID? COVID was a little tough for us because we actually didn't have Title I staff until halfway through the year. So, um, we did not hold that meeting during COVID and, um, it was just not.
We didn't have Title I services.
We didn't have Title I services and by the time we did, it was just, we were running with them. So, um, they were done just more individually.
I'll make a motion to approve policy KBB as a first read. All in favor, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, abstain, policy KBB is approved, five zero zero. KE, Public Complaints.
Okay, so just going back to JB, JBK. The NHSBA, when they updated the, um, complaint policy, we only had one that we shared between staff and, um, and the public. They have separated everything out and it's three separate policies now.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve policy KE, Public Complaints. Further discussion, questions?
Just, again, there's no summary of this, right?
No.
Well, in your community input or your correspondence, I, I suppose would be a good pulse checker.
For those that come up, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's the only thing I could point at.
Yeah. It just gets back to the earlier conversation, I'd like to see a summary.
Okay. Do you want to amend the policy?
It sounds like it's not possible, based upon our earlier conversation.
Yeah, I, I think it's, okay, so no?
I'm not amending the policy, I'm just not in support of it, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, move second in.
I did.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of, um, approving policy KE? For a first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Oh, sorry, opposed?
It was a quick.
It was a quick one. I was on a roll. That's right. I didn't forget you. Um, policy KE, prefer first reading four one zero.
And this would be basically kind of a new policy, because this was the other one, when they separated those other, it, it was separated into three categories. So, um, this is basically new, it does have some things the other policy had in it. I had to tear that policy apart and distribute it the way they outlined it, so.
Okay. So complaints about the superintendent may be made directly to, to the board through the clerk. Is, are you, who's the clerk?
Not the school district clerk.
Who is?
Uh, Terry Briand is the school district clerk.
Okay. That's just an interesting.
I, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I, I thought it was myself, I was like, this, we've never heard of that before, but.
In many cases, uh, the clerk is sitting in Michelle's chair recording the notes.
So it would probably go.
We have a different setup because Terry's the official school district clerk.
Well, she lives in town.
Right.
Well, and she also has to run all the election stuff.
No, but she, the school district clerk has to live in Litchfield.
There you go.
And so I don't.
And it swears everybody in and all of that.
Most likely come through me.
And they're elected, it's an elected.
It is.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's up to you if you want to change that term to.
Could we say the chair? Because that would be someone in town, because the only people who are on the border.
You can say whatever you want.
But is there, I guess, is there a standard policy through NHSBA that says?
Who should do that?
These?
Um, I'm al, I'm almost going to defer to evaluation of the superintendent policy on that one.
Which is why I think those should be directed to the, I guess, in my opinion, should be directed to the chair, because the chair is then in a position to do something about it more than the clerk, who's not.
I agree, especially now realizing that the clerk is not Michelle.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Is that what Terry reads us in?
I actually still think it should be the chair.
I'm sorry.
That's why Terry reads us in to our oath.
Well, she would anyway, she's a town clerk.
So the NH, I'm looking at the NHSBA version of this policy and I don't see a paragraph about complaints about the superintendent.
It's the fourth one.
Is it? Oh, there it is.
Yeah, it's, it's actually verbatim.
Through the clerk, okay.
But we don't have to do that, we can do something different if we want to.
Yeah, you don't have to.
No, you don't have to.
I really think that that language applies very. I really think that that language applies very differently by the school district and who the clerk is. I mean, I never even met the clerk in Bedford, because they never attended. They, everything was sort of remote.
Yeah.
I think it's appropriate for the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would support that.
So I would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Through the chair. Yep.
All right. Any other suggestions or questions?
Well, just a clarifying comment, that the rest of the sentence should be read, which is, it only goes to the chair after the person has had reasonable attempts to resolve it directly with the superintendent.
Right.
It's not.
Not surprise.
Mike said, so I'm gonna go to the board chair, right? Just to be clear, we're solving problems at the lowest level possible.
Yeah.
And I deserve to have an opportunity to resolve a problem somebody has with me.
So that would be, my job would be, have you talk to them?
That's right.
Exactly. And then who decides? Like Andrew said, who decides a reasonable attempt? You just keep telling them to go back to Mike? Then we go, okay, you can come in now.
Well, no.
I don't think you can set a date. I mean, somebody contacted me when I was on vacation and kept like, from the public and was just like, you know, emailed me like three times to my school board email, and I was like, listen, I'm on vacation, you know? No, I don't set my out of office on my school board email when I go on vacation.
I don't know if I would, I mean, maybe we memorialize this, but what I would do would be first refer, ask them if they had a conversation with Mike, and then I would ask Mike if this person had had a conversation with them, and then bring it to the board if Mike confirmed he had a conversation with them.
Well. I think where I get hung up, or at least, and then this kind of gets into, and I don't want to go there yet until we're ready, the board communication piece, but.
Over there.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a struggle with what is appropriate for the school board to be dealing with versus, you know, and I'll use myself as the example. I was very upset when Soph was in third grade and the classes were divided for recess, and I pitched a fit, and I went to the teachers, I went to the building administrator, I worked, I went and met with Mike, and I came to the school board. What I kind of learned from that is, that doesn't mean anything is going to be done about it. That's not necessarily the purview of the school board, and they might hear my public input, but doesn't mean anything's going to be done with that. And so I think, to the extent that someone's bringing a complaint about the superintendent and the reasonable efforts to resolve the complaint, it can't be, I don't like that Mike didn't give me what I asked him to give me. It has to be a complaint about the superintendent, I think. I don't know if we want to clarify about the, clarify it, but professionalism or, you know, it's more about ethics than it is about issue base, but I don't know how to.
Yeah.
I don't know how to say that, if that makes sense, you know?
What?
I don't know.
I'm mulling that over.
Okay, okay.
Let's table this one.
Yep.
Yeah, can we table?
Yeah.
Just, just if I may, though, I do think the superintendent is carved out, because I'm your only employee.
Right.
And so that's why this is sort of, does exist here, and um, you know, I, I had a father who contacted Brian when Brian was board chair, and it was, I don't like Mike's answer, and he was, he was too short with me and didn't really provide me the rationale I think I deserve, et cetera. And Brian called me and said, is that accurate? And I said, well, let me go back and have another conversation. If that's how the father feels, that's not how I, that's not how I, how I wanted the father to leave the conversation, but if that's how he feels, give me another crack at it.
Mm-hmm.
But I need to have the awareness of that, right? And so, and ultimately, I think, well, actually, we didn't reach a resolution. It was one of those, we agree to disagree on the best way to proceed on it. But, um, but I made extra effort, because I, I never go into something to be rude or short or terse or whatever. Um, but you're, you know, you're doing a thousand things and the phone's ringing and, you know, so who knows what really occurred in that situation, right? So again, I just need the awareness.
Right.
And, and there, and conversely, there, there are times when, of course, because I answer the phone in the SAU, that they do go right to the superintendent, because I'll get the call, he may not be in yet, and I'll, you know, they'll kind of, you know, get it off their chest, and I'll write it all down, and I'll say, give it to the superintendent, and he'll address it.
Yeah.
So it, it does work. It, it does work.
I mean, the spirit of all of these policies is to arrive at a resolution and, and solve problems, so it's. I agree with. Okay, so we'll table that.
Show them my letter.
Okay. That's the last one. Now on to board communications.
Before we do that, I, and I recognize, it's been a while since we've had public comment, in recognizing.
Oh, I'm sorry, Melissa.
Here for four hours.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, my gosh.
Can we insert a public comment?
Sure, we can, we can make it.
Move it up.
We can make a motion to move it up.
Can you move it up? All right.
Second.
I'll make a motion to move up public comment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Come on up.
Now you have to come up.
Okay.
Okay, let me just get.
Everybody knows me, but I'm Melissa Reiki, and I live at thirteen Natticoop Ave in Litchfield. Um, thankfully, I heard that all of the eighth grade will be getting Spanish, so it's gonna be a lot shorter.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretend, okay.
We don't have a.
So do I need to go back to my original?
I think we're all on the same page. It just hasn't officially happened yet, because we haven't hired that teacher.
Okay. Okay. So I appreciate that the decision was looked at, reevaluated and changed. Um, definitely is more aligned with the mission statement that the school board has out there, as well as uh, the handbook of the middle school, so that's good. Um, I do believe, from how I understand it from the DOE, that there is a supposed to be a school board policy in regards to this specifically. Um, and I know I've sent it to everybody, so I probably don't need to read it. Um, but if anybody wants me to, I will.
Melissa, if, may I respond to the policy thing? Uh, first time I was made aware of that policy was when you pointed us to that standard. We went back to the NHSBA, because they have, these are all the required policies. It's not on the list that we've been operating off of. So that got a sort of like, and then I went to Mary, and I'm like, okay, did you see these updates from 2019? And we're like, that was never highlighted in our curriculum.
And they all, anything connected to curriculum always comes through our regional channels.
So you found something that's out there. Again, there's so many policy expectations. We're gonna fix that. We're gonna get one.
Okay, good.
But we don't have one. I'll acknowledge that. We don't have one. We weren't aware we needed to have one. It was never pointed out, and we might be, who knows, first in the state to have one at this rate, because we don't even have a model to look at. But we're gonna get a policy, because that's what the rule says, so.
Thank you. Um, and then I do hope for some, if for some reason that the second teacher doesn't work out, that the upcoming eighth graders will all have the opportunity over the seventh graders. Um, and uh, I do appreciate that you gave me the opportunity to speak.
Have a great night. Sorry to keep you so late.
An hour ago.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do you want me to check the same while we're in it?
Sure.
So I'd like to close it for her.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Come on up.
Good evening. Patrick Keefe, president of the Litchfield Education Association. Um, so I just wanted to follow up on your conversation, or respond rather, to your conversation, um, where um, you guys discussed about um, getting in grades, teachers getting in grades. So um, and you mentioned that you wanted to put a two-week deadline for teachers to, to put in grades, after I assume that they received the work from the student. So um, years ago, when we sort of implemented the policy where it was two weeks for most work, but um, papers and projects were given extra time. You can imagine, I have, you know, a hundred students typically uh, about in a semester, and if I collect papers all week, that's not going to get back in two weeks, you know? Um, and, and there's different challenges from different um, disciplines, but certainly um, for, for, I would say, for at least English and uh, social studies, we collect a lot of essays. And I know science and even math does sometimes, but, so that can be challenging. Um, so I want you to just keep that in mind. Um, you know, and the other thing is, we're going more towards uh, competency-based or more, at least from what I'm hearing, authentic competency-based system. Um, you know, uh, competency-based tends to have a lot of project-based learning in it, uh, which does take a little bit longer, the process, and you, you can chunk it. Um, but oftentimes, um, projects take a little bit longer to correct too, than just your typical, you know, it's not just a test, it's not just a manager, it's not just us getting something and quickly looking over, and then providing a little bit of feedback, or if it's a test, it's not really feedback, right? And getting it back to them, because that's not a problem. But just to keep, keep that in mind. Um, and on that same thing, so um, you know, today, we just, we had our deadline due for our grades, and one of the challenges that we've had at the high school is um, a lack of um, a, a late work policy. And, and I know that you guys have talked about work-study practices and teeth, but I just want to give you, from boots on the ground, what it was like uh, for high school teachers at this grading deadline. We're collecting work from September. We're collecting it from October. We're collecting work from November. Think about how much assignments we get in a week. If we collect a hundred assignments in a week, do the math of how many students, now, yeah, the majority of the kids pass it in on time, hopefully, but the amount of late work that we're receiving, um, you know, is just, it's, it's really burning us out at the end of the semester, big time. Um, and, and you know, you guys know when teachers, or like any profession, when you're burnt out, you're not as effective. So when we talk about what's best for the students, it's not necessarily to, to give us um, you know, harder deadlines and um, and, but, but the big thing is, is when, when students really don't have uh, deadlines, and, and really essentially, when you say you can't be, you can't take points off, you can't use your professional judgment, which we hear a lot, our professional discretion, to take off a point, points for a student that's passing in work a week late, two weeks, three weeks, six months late, then it really, it really ties our hands in. It becomes sort of farcical when you go to, it might sound great in theory, but when you go to practice it, in the day-to-day grind, it becomes farcical. It becomes unmanageable, and it's an unproductive system, and I believe it's an unsustainable system. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind, because I understand like the theory of it, and, and I'm, you know, I am not against going to a competency-based system. Uh, we've, we've used competency-based in the past. It was compatible, our system with points, and maybe that's not as authentic as we want to go, fine. I think most of the teachers um, are willing to, to uh, to be open-minded and, and of course, uh, go along with it. Every model is, if it's a good model, and we understand it, it's clearly presented to us, and we have time to understand it, and there's PD, we want, we want, we want that. But um, right now, it's really difficult for us uh, at a grading deadline, when, when students are passing and stuff at, at, you know, anytime, and then we're saying, well, it's, it's competency-based, and it, that's, that's not, you know, that's not an answer. That's just a model, but I'm not even sure how no deadlines for students um, is, is necessarily part of competency-based. In work-study practices, it's, I don't think it's on the transcripts. I know you guys were asking that tonight. I don't think it is. But it certainly right now has no teeth. I'm not sure we're ever gonna get it to have teeth. Maybe uh, eligibility and things like that could be important. But um, I just want to let you guys know, right now, the model is unsustainable when it comes to getting in grades. It's really um, causing a lot of undue stress. Um, we want to work with, with, you know, uh, with administration and with the district, with the SAU, and we're gonna do that. Um, so I'm just kind of letting you know, and Andrew brought up like, um, you know, um, so how do, how do, how do you guys know about issues? How does the school board know about issues and what's management and so forth? And, and there's a difference between, when there's a formal complaint brought by a member of the LEA, we file a grievance, right? But the day-to-day like issues, and this is a big issue, grading issue, and I know there's a grading and reporting task force, but that's behind where we're at, when, when we're left to sort of fend for ourselves, when all these great, we're inundated with all this late work. And I saw a lot of teachers very stressed out, um, and, and burnt out at the end of the semester because of, because of the lack of uh, holding students accountable, and it goes towards, I think, a larger vision of, by not holding students accountable at all, and I know that's not the vision behind the competency base, but it's kind of in practice what's sort of happening when a kid can say, I didn't do the work in September. I'll go to competency recovery for one hour, two hours of one day, and just make it all up. That, that's kind of in practice what's going on. So I, you know, the, the, the gulf between theory and practice is, is, is really uh, big right now. And um, and it's just made it very stressful at the, at the end of the year for a lot of teachers at the high school. I can, I can tell you that. So I appreciate you guys doing all the work that you do, and um, and, you know, I look forward to, to joining with you and collaborating and, and going towards a full competency-based system or whatever we decide to do collaboratively. But just keep in mind, it's been very difficult at the end of the semester, collecting work from September isn't, isn't okay.
I have so many things I want to say, but I can't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, closing public input.
And nobody's in the keep now that Andrew's exited.
Thanks, Andrew. Did you want to say something?
He was testing it.
Make him feel good that somebody joined.
Yeah, I was like, wow, and then I'm like, he's right there.
Okay, great.
Board communication.
I really feel like it's important to have this conversation, and I.
I know.
You know, because we've been putting it off, and then putting it off, I just, starting it at nine twenty.
It's in July. This is what July 6th is about, right?
Well.
Board communication, communication in general.
Do we have an agenda for July 6th?
Not yet, but that was the start of the meeting that we talked about. Well, so it.
Yes, but then, I, I, you know, I kind of, this is kind of the basis of it, and, you know, we, we had a situation where we thought we needed to discuss this sooner, so I kind of asked for it to be bumped up to this meeting.
Yeah, right. I think July 6th is appropriate for, given where we are in our evening.
I'm just, I'm just not sure. I have.
I know.
I will be able to give it the amount of time the topic deserves at this time.
I know.
Well, I commented on the document. I, I thought this was just kind of on there for like a, you know, reminder for everybody to kind of fill it in. I know.
Just reminder, everybody fill this in.
See, there you go.
It looks like everybody has but me.
Yeah, well, I think there's been good updates.
Yeah, I think so too. Um, and should we just call this a working document?
And I think there's enough here to fill a full meeting.
Yeah, I think so too.
If, if you would like, July, I mean, we can try to scale back on some of the other topics and try to, you know, provide this as a, as a key.
Or we could come early, or we can extend the meeting. Right, so I'll make a motion to table this.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Five zero zero.
I may, before we leave it, the um, who do I contact for help? So those documents were developed a couple of years ago. There's one at Campbell. Campbell actually led the way on it, and then the middle school in Griffin adopted. What I would ask the board to do is examine those. If we don't have those rights, if the wording's not right, those are on our websites. They're all available. Um, you know, and if we truly believe solving the problem at the lowest level possible looks like that, then it really provides us with the opportunity to respond back to some of your contacts, because I, I will just tell you, in the, you know, Patrick's talking about the exhaustion of teachers and all the end-of-year stuff, but, you know, complaints that are just, like, it's causing kind of chaos in the system when we're not channeling things in the right way, because um, you know, I'm getting into things that I don't need to be in, and teachers are getting upset. We had a social media, you know, just, in my opinion, travesty of how to treat somebody. When, when we can't hire teachers, and then we're beating teachers up on social media, this is not okay. It's not okay. I, I will tell you, I said directly to the commissioner, you've created a climate in the state of report teachers who have violated CRT and, you know, so forth. You know, we got bounties on teachers' heads. It's not okay when I can't hire teachers and we're having a hard time keeping people. That this is the climate that's been created, and the energy going into some of these things is really frustrating. We should be able to run the schools a little bit more easily than some of the stuff that has happened. So what I'm asking for from the board is review those. If, if you think we're wrong, if you think this isn't the way to do it, give us a chance to get it fixed, because I want to keep them on the website. I want to publish them in handbooks. Um, and I want us to be able to say, here's how to proceed on something, okay? So.
So just a thought, could we, instead of putting names of people here, could we put positions and then perhaps even link an email? Link to their email or something like that, if.
I like that idea, you know?
Which document has names?
The GMS.
Okay, so I, because I just look at Campbell and his physicians. So I think Griffin.
I think a link is, is a good idea, link to their email.
So I think the hard part is, and you, I see it all the time on the PTO page or the Facebook. So I think the hard part is, and you, I see it all the time on the PTO page or the Facebook page is, who do I con, uh, who do I contact for, who's the assistant principal or who's the whoever again? I mean, I think they know.
By their first names, and that was my point. We call Mary Mary, we call Mike Mike. We, we sometimes, we should be calling you Dr. Jettie, but people don't know, hi, I'm Jody, I'm, I'm Mike. And they're like, who are these people giving us the presentation at the high school? Jody and Mike, they didn't know who they were back in the day.
I think in the parent newsletters and things that go out to, to the community.
Because Watergate does it a lot.
Mm-hmm. Right, I'd like to thank Sarah and Bill.
Yeah.
I don't know who they are.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a culture shift and maybe.
Well, e- even if we just add Dan Mitchell come, come our principal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can, as long as you keep it updated as personnel changes.
Right.
This is actually updated, except Devin is leaving. So I'm like, oh, we have to change this document now too.
So is Cory.
Um, right.
If you just do titles.
I don't see Cory on the Griffin document. Is he there?
Yep.
All right.
But I think if you do titles, maybe underneath it you do name and then, uh, their name is blue and you can click on that and then that goes right to the email. I know that's more work for whoever's doing the website, but.
It's going to need constant updating, but.
Hopefully not.
Yes. Hopefully not with the reality right now.
Content, the web.
Content editor.
Editor of each school.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I had a comment from somebody who has an incoming kindergartner and she was unaware we had before school and after school. Is that not on our website at all?
It's not school sponsored.
But that made her, I know, that made her decision to go somewhere else because she didn't think we offered the program. I don't know how we promote that. Do you know what I mean?
I think I thought about it, how I found out about it many years ago.
I mean, a lot of people will post and ask the question in January. Okay, because I feel like it's all over the page where they say, what are the before and after school care options?
You don't register now, you don't get in.
Right.
Right.
But it should be, it should be in with the kindergarten packet or whatever they get when they register.
I don't know that it should be on our website necessarily, but.
Or even a link.
But a, a link to the adult learning center, right? That just says.
Yeah.
There's a site there.
You contract with.
Yeah. That, you don't have to say any, but she's like, I didn't know that. And I'm like, what are you doing? She goes, I chose to send my child elsewhere.
Well, for those that don't know, get your registrations in now.
ASAP. Yeah. It goes up fast.
Adult Learning Center National.
Okay.
It's on the program.
Current situation for COVID?
Uh, so you can click, I mean, I'm hoping this is my last COVID update, by the way. Um. So looking at, uh, GMS numbers, they, they, you know, everything removed throughout most of June. Uh, there are no staff cases currently. There are, you know, a handful of students who tested positive, but, um, you can see our final totals as of six fifteen. So I guess we missed today, but, uh, we did have forty five staff who tested this year at Griffin and a hundred and eighty two students. So, I mean, when you keep track of, those are individual, uh, cases. So, um, you know, it is real. It is something that we've been tracking and, and, and recording. But, um, I think at this point, we're more in the endemic mode and, you know, we've learned to live with this. We're all here in a meeting without masks on, et cetera. So, um, but there are still cases that are out there. If we look at, uh, the middle school, um, I don't have numbers from today for them, but, uh, as of the fifteenth, they've had thirty two staff and a hundred and eighty two. So again, similar numbers, um, between the two schools. And even though they hit a medium yesterday, you know, I, it's hard to say exactly if that was driven by illness or, um, what the situation was. And at the high school, I just stopped when they hit the, when they went from four point one percent up to the eleven point seven, it was more finals and competency recovery based than it was active cases. If you look at it, they have no more cases than they've had any other time. So it didn't make sense to track that, even the eighteen point four percent high. What day of the week was that? Oh, that was a Friday?
That was senior skip day.
Oh, that was senior skip day? Is that a thing? I don't know. Is that really a thing? So, um.
Victor's not saying anything.
You see my point?
Yeah.
So here stands out as a red high. Is it really? Probably not, but those are our numbers. And, uh, and actually Bill's numbers, he doesn't say when that was last updated, but forty four staff and a hundred and forty four students. The numbers at the high school have always been lower all, all along and we've acknowledged that. Um, the staff number is similar to the others, so.
The only thing I would add and maybe an asterisk in terms of if we happen to track like our annual data where we compare our numbers annually to last year, I can tell you, my kid had it twice. And I think having COVID twice in the same year is becoming more, it wasn't a thing as much in the first year. And so while the LMS number say a hundred and eighty two kids, Soph was in there separately a couple of times, so.
I, I think the one eighty two is unique though.
That, that would be my question. Is it unique?
I'm pretty sure the instruction was, um, it's unique individual. So if somebody had it twice, they would not get reported.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
They would be reported twice, so Soph would have shown up as
A number.
A student up above.
Right.
But you can't go back and add all those up to that total.
Okay, well then that's good. Okay, so then we can compare. I mean, again, hopefully we don't need to track it going forward, but if we do, we can compare.
The other thing is that in June, the state changed what they're reporting. They, they've stopped reporting some of the numbers now. Um, for example, the test positivity, they've taken it right off the website. I think more and more people are relying on home tests, so they're not even reporting that number because it doesn't reflect all the home positives. So, um, so it just made it, even the data in the very end on, on the summary sheet got a little wonky to track just because we didn't have access to everything the same way. But, um, you know, there are sixteen new cases in Litchfield over the last fourteen days for a hundred thousand population of one eighty four, slightly below Hillsborough County, but still a number to be worried about, still substantial in terms of community spread. Um, but again, we're all living with it. I, I will point out to the board that, um, you know, and, and it continues to be just, even though we've had like the protocol sheets, you know, my phone was blowing up on Saturday over an issue.
I don't know what you're talking about.
With a, well, I.
It was a valid concern.
It was a valid concern and it was, um, what are the rules? In which column are we landing relative to this? And, you know, I, I was out in the driveway working with my wife on a home project and I left the phone on the charger and I went in, I'm like, oh my God. Hang on honey, I'll be out in a minute. I've got to source through something and, you know, I think ultimately by talking it out, making some phone calls, we were able to get to the right resolution of it. But, um, as much as we've become accustomed to what the rules are, it still is like.
Changing.
Yeah.
Like.
Just little tweaks that are in.
One little sentence changed everything.
And, and actually, uh, my first read of it was, and I had an old definition. My old definition was what it took to be up to date meant you had to be so many days beyond.
Your third shot.
Shots, right? And now the CDC says the minute you get the shot, the minute you get it, you are up to date.
Ah.
You don't have to wait. And so I'm like, well, that's a new rule.
Yeah.
I, when did that change? But that's what the website says. So it was just piecing stuff together. So I appreciate, I'm saying this because it, it played out, my phone was blowing up, but there were phones across town blowing up.